We good? Positive? Hundred percent? Five hundred, okay, excellent. Okay, good evening, this is the October, my glasses on, twenty fifth, two thousand twenty two, regular meeting of the Plant and Zoning Commission of New Canaan, Connecticut. Lynn, if you kindly, this is a hybrid meeting, so if you could tell everybody how you will be running the hybrid meeting, thank you.
Sure, so since this is a hybrid meeting, there are people both in the room and on Zoom. When each item comes up and there's an opportunity for people to speak, we'll take comment from those in the room first, and then people on Zoom. If you're on Zoom and you want to speak, please make sure to raise your icon hand so we can find you rather quickly, since we'll have a lot of people online tonight.
Thank you, Lynn. Roll call, John Goodwin, I'm here, Ken Turner.
Here.
Dave Ward.
Here.
Dan Radman.
Here.
John Chris.
Here.
Claire Desgornier.
Here.
Krista Nielsen.
Here.
Arthur Cassavan.
Here.
John Engel.
Here.
Chris Herring, not here, Paul Kanag. Okay, not here, okay. A couple of announcements on the agenda, item number five. Burtus Avenue that was closed last night, so that will not be heard in a public forum tonight. And in regular meeting. Okay, great, thank you. Regular meeting items eleven, twelve, and thirteen, seven fifty one Weed Street will not be discussed tonight. I feel like I'm saying this every night now, though, but this commission was here last night till about eleven o'clock. I know about these guys, but I'm exhausted, so I very much appreciate all applicants, public, to be as brief and concise as possible, thank you. Okay, let's get going with the meeting, public hearing, item number one, one glasses. Two twenty Elm Street, upon application, Ryan Salvatore versus Salvatore Architects, authorized agent for town in New Canaan, owners for site plan approval of sections four, four, C one, to allow permission to locate two educational programs on the first floor of the existing commercial office building in accordance with section four, three, C eleven, who's here to present, please?
Hi, I'm Brian Leslie Superintendent Schools, and I'm joined by Bill Teszler, who's Assistant Superintendent for People and Family Services, Ryan is on his way, he's caught up in traffic.
That's true.
Understanding that it was a late night last night, we thought we'd get right to it.
I appreciate that.
Yep, it's, it's a first for us presenting, so please feel free to question anything or ask us to fill in the blanks anywhere. What we are looking to do through our application is to get approval to the half of the building at two twenty Elm, or our two student programs that we currently have co-located with us at thirty nine Elm Street. Through the process of over the last couple of years, we've started up a launch program, which is a program for student aged eighteen to twenty two. And in the last couple of years, we've begun an alternative school, which is for high school students who need an alternative, smaller sized program in order to best succeed in high school. So the launch program with the eighteen to twenty two year olds serves generally around four to six, maybe seven students at the most. The alternative program scales up from about ten to about fourteen, sixteen at a maximum. So what we're looking to do is we plan out the move from where we are on Locust Ave into the new building at two twenty Elm. We're looking to remain co-located with these two programs, there are many efficiencies there that we capture by doing so, and so when we put together the renovation plan, we really looked at the site and split it in half, where half of the first floor of two twenty would be our central office spaces, so that's where our business offices and things. My office, Bill's office, another, and on the other side of the building, the other half on the first floor, would be the two programs. The launch program would be a little over twelve hundred square feet, so one thousand two hundred thirty square feet. And the, which will be in the front of the building. The alternative program will be, would be in the back of the site, which is just about the same size, about twelve thirty. And between the two is a shared kitchen area, because in the launch program, life skills is a significant component of their curriculum. So they need to learn to, you know, work in a kitchen, to operate laundry, to care for themselves, and in the alternative program, the opportunity to come out of class, be together, cook together, and have lunch together to do those things, is a strength of that smaller size in the program there. We have, in the application, you see, we've talked to the town extensively about parking, and we're still looking at the best ways to finalize and resolve that. But essentially, the alternative students would either be dropped off, bus might bring them, or they may drive, and I'm working with the first selectmen to identify where they'd be parked. There are spots in the lumberyard lot that are available for our staff, and then up at the top lot, which is twenty spaces, and we have fifty percent of those, we'd be converting another one of those spaces into a handicapped spot where, for the vans, for our launch students, because they are transported through the white suburban there. Each day, as they come in though. The timing of it is after your approval, we would look to get out to bid in the next week or so, we leave those bids on the street probably until early December, and then look to do a bid opening mid-December and begin construction hopefully in the winter, sometime in January, to be finished by the early spring, and we'd look to make the move in the summertime.
Questions for the applicant, one thing I will note is this is a site plan application, this application was technically misnoticed, we should have been hearing it regular meeting mode, since it was noticed in public hearing mode, we will take input from anybody in the public, but commissioners' questions?
John Chris, I have one question, my understanding is that there are particular rules for schools regarding public safety issues such as sprinklers, entries and exits and so forth. Will all of these rules that would apply to any public school also apply to the spaces you would be using for these educational programs?
They will, both because the rules apply and because we would do that regardless. They will be working very closely with the fire marshal there in town with our emergency services and everyone there. We also are looking at replicating security, the software as far as cameras and scan access and lock doors and things in this space for the students that we have in our other schools.
Thank you.
With respect to the launch program, how do you accommodate those potential students now, before you have developed?
Sure, so those students, that program right now runs at thirty nine Locust, where we are, where we're currently located, that runs on the first floor and a small portion of the second floor. And then also on the second floor is the alternative high school, so we are co-located with them now, and we're looking to remain the same.
Is it an increase in space that you're looking for, or?
It's actually a decrease in space. The, working with the first selectmen, when the opportunity came available to purchase the space that we're moving into, we felt it was a good idea for a variety of reasons. We like the location, we like the opportunity to design the space for our students as an educational space, we think there's really a great opportunity there. And to move into a town owned building versus renting, which we've been doing for a long time.
How many, how many vans do you foresee coming to the facility every day?
Generally, it's, it would be a minimum of one per student every night. Because the students are picked up on the van as they move through. The vans would, they would disembark and then the van would leave and go do other things. Maximum of one student per van, yes.
How many students total?
At the launch program, there would be four to six students, but there are occasions where we have multiple students riding in the vans, depending on their needs, and then at the high school, the alternative campus, I would say that, you know, probably three vans are on a daily basis there, and many students drive, but it also depends on the age of the students who are in the program at any given year, you know.
How many students in the downtown high school program?
Anywhere between twelve to sixteen.
So twelve to sixteen vans?
No, because it wouldn't be one van per student, you'd have
You just said it was one van per student.
As a, as a maximum. So if we had
I'm sorry, let me jump in, so there are two, the two programs, so in our launch program, that's one student per van. But in our alternative campus, there can be four students or so per van. The needs are different, and the supervision needs are different on the vans for those two.
And they're dropping off and then vans go back to the high school?
Or go out and do other runs, sometimes they'll drop off there and they might go on a run to pick up a preschool student to bring over to West, you think so?
So what's going to happen to the park area? Are you taking parking away from that upper lot next to the building? There's only about twelve spots or something up there, how many are you taking away for vans?
So we have, I think it's about eighteen maybe, and fifty percent for us, fifty percent for the upper floor. The vans wouldn't be parked there for any long period of time, they'd be coming through to drop off a student or to pick up a student, and then they'd be pulling out. The vans are parked over at the high school every night.
I understand that part, I'm just worried about the congestion, I mean, you're already, that, that building historically has always been stressed on parking, so all of the parking, you guys know it well, right, across from Walter Stewart's. All the parking, people that can't park there, park in the commuter lot, and you have extra passes for all of that. So all of those people are now going to be, some of those are, they're going to be displaced into the commuter lot further, so that you make space for the vans?
Right now, nobody's using our half of that upper lot. So because it's vacant.
Because it's vacant, right, but
So we'd have a few spots that are specifically for the vans.
How many, how many people are you going to have working here?
About twenty eight people.
Yeah, so it'll be stacked and the railroad lot will be stacked.
Yeah, the lot below will be picking up there.
I, yeah, I'm just worried about the traffic flow in that area. With that many vans coming and going, I'm assuming they're all coming and going around the same time every morning and every afternoon for pickup and drop off?
Yeah, about, it could stagger a little bit for lunch, but generally, it's pretty consistent.
Yeah. I think that's a problem, but
Would they pick up and drop off in the back of the building or in the front?
There's no access to the building from the back.
Well, the, so our launch students would be dropped off right up front, some of them have ambulatory issues and things, so that would be right in front of the building with the handicap access. With the alternative, there is a problem, we could look at any of the alternative school vans, perhaps they could drop off below and the students could walk up the sidewalk to get to the building, instead of using that upper lot, so if there's a problem, then we could, we could always test.
Anybody else? Okay, this hearing is closed, thank you, gentlemen. Okay, item number two, eighty Hawks Hill Road, upon application, Maria Lopez, Mario Lopez, owners for a special permit of sections three, four, C three, to allow an in-law apartment and new proposed to touch garage, twenty four by thirty two feet, one acre zone, eighty Hawks Hill Road.
Mr. Chairman, this is Paul Kanag, I just want the record to show that I'm present. Missed the roll call.
I'm sorry?
This, this is Paul Kanag, I want the record to show that I'm present.
Okay, yeah. Okay, we got you, thank you. Go ahead, sir.
Hi, hi, good evening, my name is Mario Lopez, I'm an operator of a Mount Builders. My, my residence at Hawk Hill Road. What I'd like to do is build an accessory apartment for my mother. It's approximately seven hundred square feet, it's on a second, the first, first story will be a garage area, and above is a a seven hundred square foot apartment for for Ann Manzi. It will have an entrance from the side of the building that will lead into a mudroom on the first floor with some cubbies and storage area, and have a stairs going up to a little foyer area with a laundry, where you then enter into her apartment, where there'll be a kitchen. Family room area, and off that, a nice bedroom with a closet and a full bathroom. It will consist, it'll be a gable, it kind of resemble, I just finished a home there, our own home, which is a a barn style home, cottage style, and the barn complements the home with a steep twelve, sixteen pitch roof with two small dormers for her, for her residence. And that's about it, it's siding will consist of a hardy board which will be a board and batten, prefinished material, will foam the building for efficiency. I've already acquired the special permit for the expansion of the septic system, or whatever's required for an accessory dwelling that's detached from the building. And that's about it, we'll have double insulated, you know, windows, Marvin Integrities with an asphalt shingle roof, and I think I mentioned that the whole building will be foamed also for insulation with hardwood floors and Hank Row would design it for me, who designed the home, and I've built many homes that Hank has designed for me, and I think he did a nice job. I have already put green dry, it's an acre, it's an acre of property on Ameri Parkway, so behind is all, behind the, the, the back of the property is all state property. And there's no additional runoff on this, I have large infiltrator system that I put in the, in the property that's oversized and fully engineered. And that's about it, I, I, I did clear that the lot was, was a horrendous shape when I, when I first started over there. So I did clear the lot and put all new large green giants all along the property lines for screen along this whole southern, southwestern side of the driveway area and the, the proposed accessory structure, those are all green giants along that property line for shielding of, of the neighboring properties on both sides, on the lower side also, where the infiltrators are in the septic system. I also ran green giants along that property line also. It's a relatively level lot, and that's about, that's, that's about it.
Okay, questions for the applicant?
I have a, just a quick question for you, you said this was for your mother-in-law or your
My mother.
Your mother. That stair is going to be a real challenge in the very near future, I don't know if you're thinking about some kind of lift or?
We thought about that. If there are sleepers in that mudroom where we elevated that, that ceiling is seven, seven, or the upper floor, but it's a little over eight foot, eight foot for first floor. We turned the stairs also, and they're a little wider, in case we had to have accessibility for that, the chair, but what I was thinking also is if you look at the plan. If you'll be able to get that up, I also threw around the idea, right there, go, go back, there you go, right there, okay, so as you see the, it's okay if I oh, right, as you see the side entrance here, that's elevated a little bit, when you walk in, you've got the one riser, the two rise here to the landing, and then you go up, but behind this area is a little utility area, I'm thinking of framing a small elevator jack, possibility, a possible for, for that area, but, and my mother's eighty four and she's in great shape, she's here tonight, she's in, she's in real good shape. Good shareful. So, but we have thrown around a couple, a couple of different things there on that one, but I know that you can't get those, the, you know, that, that goes up there.
Thank you.
Anybody else?
Heating is oil or electric?
Propane, propane, exist, the existing propane tank is at the upper corner of the, of the building there. And I'm not sure if I'll do, I'll probably end up doing a hot air furnace. But I was, I was thinking about those Mitsubishi wall units also, but most likely, we'll probably go with a hot air furnace. Is that ceilings kind of, it's like seven, seven on the second floor because of the zoning regulations with the accessory? So I'm not, you know, we'll see how much room we have above, we're going to kind of wing that a little bit, but it is propane. Along with the, the home is also, it's a, I bear a thousand gallon tank over there. And we do all the work ourselves, we're all, we've been building homes and renovating homes in New Canaan for about thirty five or so years. But we do it all hands on, we do everything ourselves.
Okay, any other questions, commissioners? Gentlemen, good on Zoom, okay, thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Anyone from the public like to address this application? Lynn, take a quick look at Zoom, don't anticipate anything, but
Does anyone on Zoom want to speak on this application?
Okay, super, this hearing is closed, item number three, one twenty seven Middle Ridge, upon application, Michael Sosai, authorized agent for George and Susan. I'm going to butcher this one, Anushkowitz, owners for a special permit of sections three, four, C six, to allow the proposed garage is less than a hundred and fifty feet from the setback on two acres zone at one twenty seven Middle Ridge, who's here to present?
Are they in Zoom?
We have anybody on Zoom raising their hand? Okay, let's keep moving, item number four, eighty six Summer Street, upon
Hold on a moment. I'm, I'm, I'm not the applicant, I'm somebody that has an opinion, I'm a neighbor and I just had some questions. Are they representing tonight?
We thought we were, ma'am, but I can't open the application without an applicant, so apologies on that.
So in other words, will this be transferred for another day?
Yes, my guess will be it'll be heard at our next meeting, which is Commissioners, November fifteen, is that right?
Yeah.
November fifteenth?
Yes.
Can she submit her question to the record? The applicant can see them before he presents?
Sure. Have you spoken to the applicant, ma'am?
No, I was just informed a few hours ago that there was a certified letter and I'm out of town, so I will return tomorrow. And then I would like to inform myself, but they said they, the meeting was tonight, which is why I was calling in.
Right, okay, so Commissioner Engel notes, you're free to submit questions to the town planner, but I would also recommend you reach out to the applicant. Okay, item number eighty
I will do that, I just, as I said, was only informed this morning and I'm out of town, but I will return
Yeah, November fifteen, yeah, and just keep your eye on the notices on the town website to make sure that we are indeed hearing it. We have no idea what happened to the applicant, I'm sorry about that.
Nice size, thank you.
At least we have one happy commissioner, okay, item number four, eighty six Summer Street, upon application, David Root, David Rucci, authorized agent for eighty six Summer Street, owners for a site plan approval, sections A two, B, one, B, and special permit of sections three, two, C, one, B dot three, or C, one, A, and six, four, G, two, to allow construction to detach to family structure in the, or in the alternative and attach to family and allow soil disturbance and excess ten thousand square feet, Mr. Rucci.
Hi, David Rucci, Lampertu and Rucci in New Canaan, I'm here representing Anthony Tomas, local builder here in New Canaan, also is Kate Throckmorton, she's the landscape engineer, she's on Zoom, and Tom Quinn from Peak Engineering. If you can just start the, so this is a two-family home that's currently located at eighty six Summer Street. I presented this evening two separate plans, one for detached units and one for attached units, just kind of giving the commission a choice as to how they would like to look at this, while the applicant would prefer the detached, specifically based on the fact that we have a very narrow lot here, lots only sixty feet in width. We received a variance for the width from the zoning board of appeals, so in lieu of having the one hundred feet, we have a variance for that particular frontage, it's a fairly large lot, though, and it goes very deep back from Summer Street into the Five Mile River Road, the Five Mile River. So essentially, this is a seventeen thousand five hundred square foot lot, you recall that for detached, you need fifteen thousand square feet, so this is over that particular limit, and we're proposing to detach these, we think that that's probably the best way for these to, to be sighted on this property, and if, Lynn, you could just move through, give you sort of just a quick overview, so there's the house on Summer Street. Currently today, it is a two-family, we've built somewhere around nineteen eleven. Next picture, please, this is from the back, from where Five Mile River, if I was standing at the river, this would be looking at the back of the property, you see it slopes down, and we're planning on using that particular topography so that the, the house can be lower in the back when it's a detached structure, it's going to be about five feet lower than the front, the front property, next picture, please. This is just from the side, this is actually, I'm sorry, looking from the back down towards the river, you see we have a lot of screening in place right now, next picture, please. This is one of the side yards of one of the other houses, and then just keep moving forward, once again, another side yard of the property, please, next picture, please. And this is the front, if you were standing at the front door, you can see there's a lot of screening across V D, across Summer Street, V D Street would be kind of like off tier right there, if you were standing at the front door. Next picture here, sort of an overview of the property. This part of Summer Street is mostly two families in this area, as you move north, I would say as you move south, it's sort of more single families, there's a couple two families that's in there, but moving north, it's more two family, and up V D Street is obviously more two family as well, just to kind of orient yourself, and you'll see there's a lot of screen and there's really not a lot of neighborhood congestion in the back of the property where the Five Mile River is, next picture, please. So we first started this, we went to the fire marshal, he asked us, we just asked his opinion as to, you know, what he would rather see, and he makes the comment that, you know, it's not necessarily a position that he takes here or there, but he would rather see a detached structure, it would be easier for him with forty feet in the middle, which is one of the reasons why we did move forward with the detached, although that was our preference to begin with, my next picture, next this is the landscape plan, I can let Kate Throckmorton go through both landscape plans, when we get to it, it just happens to sit near in the application and the, at this particular area, but Kate's prepared to go through that, next slide, please. These are just the plants, I blew those up because I wasn't sure what was going to happen with the eleven by seventeen, before I printed them out, but you can actually see them now on there better than before, but we could never see them in the past. Next paragraph, next paragraph, next picture, so this is what the family would essentially look like. It's, you know, Anthony Tomas has done a lot of these two families in town, he's done some over on Maple Street, he's done some on Seminary Street. And these are sort of, you know, what his designs are going to look like, the materials that are going to be a part of these are going to be, you know, asphalt, timberline roof, it's going to be black, porches are going to be standing steam aluminum, color is going to be gray, gable's going to be, gable siding is going to be PVC board and batten. And then the main house is going to be like a hardy board type of siding. So this is, as you can see, so there's like a five foot drop in this property from the front to the back, where we're able to detach it, and we have in the middle there the parking spots for these particular homes. If it's about five feet, I think it goes from two hundred and fifty nine to two hundred and forty, I'm sorry, two hundred and fifty five to two two fifty nine to two fifty four, the drop in the back of the five, for the five feet, next So these are just, you know, your, your plans for them, it's all going to be within the height regulations, setback regulations. They're about eleven hundred square feet apiece as far as interior living space, you're allowed twenty five eighty on this property, we're doing twenty five hundred on this property.
Eleven hundred each or?
Each. Each. Eleven hundred for each building, so it's about per floor, per floor, correct. Next slide, please, and we, I don't know if there's going to be any questions on this, I just have this in the presentation, but I think it's pretty straightforward, if we, if you have questions at the end, we can go through that, through these particular designs. I would just keep going, Lynn, please. These are just how the detached units are going to stand on there. And then we have the attached building, so this is the way the attached would look, we would take out the And then we have the attached buildings, so this is the way the attached would look, we would take out the spacing in between the two buildings and those would just be garages, so they'd be attached by garages. And it'll just be sort of one longer structure, which was something we were sort of hoping to avoid in a narrow lot like this. But we did do both designs, just for the commission, take a look at how they each kind of sit on the property. Next slide please. So this is sort of that, how that would look. You can see there's kind of garages now in the, in the beginning, very similar look as far as the front goes and the rear goes. But it's sort of, we think more massing, looking at both neighbors on either side of the properties based on the fact that it is a narrow lot. Next slide. Then we can just go through, you just see the only real difference here is the, is the property is being attached by garages. Next slide. And then if you look at the last page of what I handed out, and this is the it was not in the original submission, but this is a landscape plan, I just have a colored one on what I, I handed out to you, to all. And like, once again, I can have Kate Throckmorton sort of talk you through the landscaping plans while we're, while we're here now at this particular point for both the detached and the attached buildings, is that all right, Mr. Chairman?
Yeah.
Okay, so Kate, if I could just ask you to sort of run through the two particular plans, if you want to start on page, I think it's fifteen for the detached, and then it's the last page in your packet for the attached, at least from a color perspective. So it's Kate on.
Yep, I'm here, hi David, good evening, for the record, Kate Throckmorton, a licensed landscape architect with Environmental Land Solutions. I'm gonna start with the, the attached because that is the one that is up on the screen. Both plans are, are fairly similar in that emphasizing native plants and trying to keep an inviting, open streetscape along, along the street. This plan in particular is different in that it does have a parking space in the front. One thing that is, is actually different, that's not really picked up in the rendering is that the parking spot at the front is actually pushed down slightly about a foot and that, and there is a wall, retaining wall that wrapper or up rounds that wrap arounds the space with some planting around it to help blend and kind of nestle that parking spot a little bit better and, and to soften that parking space. Beyond that, we have, you know, five mid-story trees dispersed around the property that's uniformed along both plans. Screening between the units as achieved with Arborvitie. And there is more, more plants in the detached because we have more room and there's a little bit more yard space. As you move to the back, building B, as David said is set a little bit lower, it's got a patio to the rear and the existing lawn pretty much mimics the outline of the existing property development. And then we have added a, a larger buffer to the wetlands and we've received a wetlands permit for that. And then certainly there's foundation plants around the northern ends of the building to address that, those softening, there's also a solid, in both scenarios, a, a solid screening fence along the northern or top part of the property which helps separates this driveway from the adjoining driveway, which is immediately on the next property, and then we've added some perennials and vines that could help soften that fence line. If we want to roll, scroll back up to the detached, I can just fair, briefly go over the differences.
Please proceed while we're getting there.
Sure, absolutely, so with the detached units, the building A is a little bit closer to the street and with a porch and there's, there's just open lawn. So we've tried to keep that a similar streetscape to where it now exists, so you can walk right up to the front door. Similar mid-story tree, similar evergreen groupings for privacy for that first front patio. As you move to the middle of the property, you see that that's where the existing, the proposed parking is set between the two buildings, which is a very effective way to screen them. There's also a picket fence that actually runs around that parking lot to help, help separate and prevent kids and pets from going where the cars are, and then we certainly have room for additional screening there. And as you move back to building B, again, this one is, since they're detached, it's set lower. But essentially, B, besides being slightly further back in the lot, it's got the same setup with foundation plantings, mid-story trees and the wetland buffer along the river is the same. And I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Well, Mr. Rucci, why don't we keep going and then we'll.
Okay, I think I'd like to have Tom Quinn jump on now to talk about the site plan which starts on page thirty five of what I've handed out to commission members and his presentation. So Tom, do you want to just run through the two different site plans for both the detached and the attached and also your conversations with the town engineer?
Sure, for the record, my name is Tom Quinn, my office is in sixteen Old Mill Road, right in Connecticut, I'm a licensed professional engineer. And as David said, we've worked up the engineering for the two different layouts, what you see there on your screen is for this, the attached building. But again, similar to Kate's, the engineering drainage and facilities, utilities and drainage are very, very similar for the two. The, the septic and skinny to water and sewer lines are gonna be almost identical to the two structures, same number of services. The drainage locations for underground systems have been placed in the starting my video now, have been placed in the same location for both layouts. The drainage report was submitted to the town engineer Maria Coplet back in July, I believe, and she had original comment and some of those comments were addressed in September. Maria has found that the drainage report and the facilities are in conformance with the town's drainage policies, however, there is one comment that we discussed recently, including today. And that is the best way to preserve the drainage wells on the property, the drainage wells are important function to provide the overflow from the infiltration systems as well as to maintain the sites surface water on our property. So she and I have discussed different ways in which to preserve those swales. What we believe is the, the correct course of action here is that we're gonna provide a homeowner's packet which will run with the deed of the property and that homeowner's packet is very similar to what you have probably seen for other wetland applications or large commercial projects, and what that is, is a package that goes with the homeowner, describes the drainage faci- facilities to them in common language, roof gutters, roof leader systems, catch basins and the underground infiltration system. And what we do is we submit a drainage as bill with that description. And we provide maintenance required, a schedule of maintenance, and in this case one of those things will include the maintain, maintenance and preservation of the drainage swales. And we think that that will be sufficient and adequate to, for the homeowners to realize that they need to maintain the property so that it continue to function as intended. So we, we're gonna make that homeowner's package part of this application, and I believe Maria has looked favorably, favorably on that as long as we attach it to the deed. So that's pretty much the, the summary of my my review there, if you have any questions, I'm happy to answer them.
Uh, Tom, do you want to just talk quickly about the site disturbance since it's over ten thousand square feet?
Sure, it is over ten thousand square feet. And we are proposing some disturbance more than twenty five feet away from the structure, so as you know, the the planning zone, the zoning regulations require special approval for us to disturb land that's more than twenty five feet away from a structure or away from where we're doing drainage or facilities installation, so for the detached the detached layout, I believe we're, we have about thirteen hundred square feet. They were looking for approval and that would be the disturbance at the rear end of the property, back by the patios and that's disturbance in order to install a permanent infiltration trench and also provide some grading and plantings that were all part of the wetland application. When you look at the attached layout, because the buildings are a little bit more compact, that area of disturbance is a little bit larger, I think it's twenty two hundred square feet. And that again is in the same area, it's all at the rear end of the property, which is more than twenty five feet away from the building and away from the infiltration system installation, so we seek approval for that disturbance as well.
So just sort of summing it up, I mean, we are requesting that this, for the detached units, we think that's a better plan, we think it takes into account more of the topography of the property and it makes the properties, it gives them a little bit more privacy amongst themselves. They're a little bit farther apart from a fire marshal, from a fire safety perspective. The streetscape kind of looks the same because you just have sort of the one building in the front and the building in the back is really gonna be, you know, fairly hidden based on when you're going by it. It's the same utility connection, same drainage connections, same number of trees that are being removed. We get a little bit more landscaping based on the detached units, we are looking for approval of the detached units with the detached unit. And we are willing to obviously set a condition based on these homeowner package, which I think is actually a really good idea for, you know, the drainage policy while it's being met. You know what Maria was talking about, the town engineer was the fact that, well, how do you know that someone's not gonna build in that area or they're gonna put a patio there, et cetera? Well, now with something like a deed restriction saying that you have to take care of those swales or those areas that in and of itself would, you know, obligate the owner of this property to make sure that they do keep that, not allow them to sort of build into those areas, so that's, Darian has something a little bit similar to that as well, so that's sort of what we what we sort of fashion that off of. I don't really have much more, if there's any other questions related to either yeah, this application to the landscape architects or to Tom Quinn for engineering, we can certainly run through this.
Quick question, would the deed restriction just be for the owner of building B in the back?
No, if, since it's the whole property, it would be a restriction for both properties, so they'd have to maintain it no matter what, so building A couldn't go over there and do anything either, so we would put it as a homeowner's pack, it's gonna be an association. It's, it's essentially a two-family association, so that'll be a part of the declaration, restrictive covenants. It'll almost look like an easement, but we decided not to do an easement because if we did an easement, we'd have to almost be to the town. So there was no one else really to go forward with the easement with, so we thought that was the best way to go with the homeowner's packet.
David, I just have a question on the finish as far as the glazing, it, the rendering appears to be like a smoked dark gray solar gray or is it clear?
I'm gonna let Anthony Tomas just talk a little bit.
Hi, I'm Anthony Tomas. So we are, we are painting the house white, we are using hardy board, cement board siding and board and batten on the gables. Roof will be black.
How about the glass?
The glass will be clear, there'll be Marvin integrity windows.
Thank you.
David, is this going, is this been proposed to the wetland commission?
Yes, we have approval from the wetlands commission.
This is Commissioner Cassavant, is there any remains of the existing structure or is that totally removed?
It's totally removed, Cassavant.
Thank you. Can you explain the patio strategy?
In, in what sense?
You have patio for one unit, not for the other? The stepping stones in the back, is that the patio for the second unit?
Yes, yeah.
And then for building A, the patio approaches the property line?
Yes.
Okay.
I don't think I understand the infiltration system and insofar as it's being added to a deed. That's kind of a new thing for me, so when I look at the plan in the back here there's a part that looks like a tic tac toe board and it's labeled infiltration system, is that, that's the, that's the vessels underground that hold water, right? Yeah, absolutely right, and so from that's what you're talking about, needs to be maintained, correct, and there's gonna be a swell running along that property line. What's a swell mean? So.
It's like a bump, so, so we, we hold back any, any water runoff that we miss with the catch base would hit the swell before it would go into the neighbor's property and would run down the swell and and essentially dump off into this bottom rip, rip wrap that we have wrapped around. It would be piped into there.
It says permanent infiltration trench, that's, that's the rip wrap?
Yeah.
Okay, so that's keeping it from going to the backyard.
Yes.
Is there a, a retaining wall or two retaining walls on the colored diagram? Which is number fifth, page fifteen, it looks like the, beyond the patio, proposed lawn limit. And then we have two rows of, of bushes.
No, there's no.
And it looks like there's a grit, a honeycomb like substance underneath them, faint, and I didn't know whether that was.
The retention system, that, that's the rip wrap that I'm.
That's more rip wrap, okay. And so that looks like compost underneath the bushes and that, and the rip wrap is underneath the, the compost?
Yeah.
So I know.
No, we're gonna keep it.
It is exposed.
Yes.
And then below that, then it's, it's dramatically sloped, so it looks like it's two feet of drop for every three feet of, of horizontal, it's two feet of vertical, so it's, it's, it's like a forty five degree pitch behind that. But no retaining walls?
No.
Okay. I think I get it now, so when you say that you can't, you have to maintain these and you can't build things on top of them but it looked like one of these retention systems had a parking spot on top of it. The front of building B, is that a parking spot or not a parking?
So you, you could build up, you could put parking on top of, of the galleries that we have underneath the parking area. And it, it does not affect because they're, they're made for a, a surface to be on top, what we were talking about for the, for the town for Maria was basically to maintain the swales.
The swales.
And that's more of the key, that's gonna be worded in the deed. And, and that, and that back piece of retention of rip wrap, those are the important key factors that have to be maintained.
The next person doesn't like the swell and says, I don't like that bump in my yard, and they take it out and the neighbor gets all kinds of water. The neighbor's gonna look at the deed and say, put the bump back.
That's what it's for.
I think I get it now, thank you.
Is there any history of the river flooding in this area?
Not that I know of, I think based on the topography, it's gonna be pretty quick, pretty hard to get up there, we did go to the wetlands to receive and received a permit from that particular department, I was not at that here and I can't tell you whether they discussed that or not. But my, just by looking at the topography there, it would seem unlikely that it could get all the way back up into these houses, but it's a good question.
David?
Yes.
Tom Quinn here, the hundred year flood line is shown on the survey and it's way down at the bottom of the bank. The hundred year flood line is way at the bottom of the bank of our property.
Okay, thank you.
Page twenty eight.
Anybody else? You guys good?
Good.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Would anyone from the public like to address this application? Lynn, let's check Zoom, please.
Does anyone on Zoom wish to speak on this application?
Good, okay, super, this application is closed. As I noted at the beginning of the meeting, item number five was closed last night, so that is that. As I noted at the beginning of the meeting, item number five was closed last night. So that is that. Items six and seven will be heard together. One fifty one Main Street discussion consideration, the request Brian Smith, Robinson Cole authorization. New Canaan Library owners along with its affiliates of properties. Located one fifty one Maine, sixty four Maple, forty four, forty eight, fifty six South Avenue to amend the zoning regulations. Created June sixteen, two thousand and seven revised December seventeen, two thousand and twenty one to amend sections five, ten, E one lot related standards. And five, ten, E two building related standards to modify the side yard setback on the maximum total accessory building high requirements in the quasi public. Library overlay zone, item number seven, one fifty one Main Street about application Brian Smith. Robinson Cole, New Canaan Library. Affiliates properties located one fifty one Maine, sixty four Maple, forty four, forty eight, fifty six South or site plan amendment of sections eight, two, eight. And five, ten, H to amend the site plan approved by the commission on July thirteenth, two thousand and twenty one to satisfy conditions approval eight, nine, the special permit. Mister Smith.
Thank you, Mister Chairman, members of the commission. My name is Brian Smith. I'm an attorney with Robinson and Cole. My office addresses two eighty Trumbull Street in Hartford. We also have a Stanford office that I frequently work out of. And we're here tonight on behalf of the New Canaan Library. For basically two items for your consideration, the text amendment and a site plan amendment. And they're both engendered by conditions eight and nine of your special permit that was issued as. Was just read on July thirteenth, twenty twenty one. Requiring the library to undertake a study and come back to this commission with what it might. Do to preserve. The legacy building. And, and that happened because we had to do that within a one hundred and twenty days. We, we came back with a proposal. And the proposal was to relocate the portion that is seen in the application. Closer to the, the service station does on the adjacent property. And that was considered by this commission and on December fourteenth of twenty twenty one, this commission approved the concept. So the concept of relocating this, the structure. Has been thoroughly debated both originally and then again in December, but now with the approval of the concept by this commission. In December, the library has gone about and spent many thousands of dollars in preparing the applications that you have tonight. So why are we here for a text amendment? That's the first question. And Lynn, if you have the. Presentation board. Slide in. I'm sorry.
Floating.
Okay, I'll keep going while floating. The, the approval. Requires the, the location that we are proposing that works best to preserve the green and also preserve the building. Is to locate the structure about seven feet away from the side yard. And the side yard requirements in the quasi public library overlay zone. Were originally fifteen feet, so we need to change the text to accommodate this. So here we have. I think there's, yeah, that shows the, the side yard location. And then I think, and then so that, that, that's the first accommodation that was being changed. In the overlay zone and the second is a, a request to change the height. And increase the height limit from fifteen feet to twenty five feet. And why is that? Well, they strike the existing structure is already over fifteen feet. If you measure it, just it's, I think nineteen feet, six inches, actually, if you measure it under the formula that the commission requires you to do. And because we are concerned that it may be deemed an accessory structure, that's why we want to ensure that it is permitted as a right. And that's why we are suggesting that change to accommodate. The relocation of the building. Now. The, so that, that is the, the text amendment and. In my August twenty fourth letter, I, I set out in detail. The, the. The, the one condition that it still and has always conformed with the plan of a conservation and development. I can go through all those elements, but you have them before you. And unless you want me to go through them all. I would just refer you to the letter, but it's, it's up to the commission if you would like to hear it.
That's fine for now.
Okay, so then I'm going to, I'm going to keep moving ahead and. And make that representation and then. Move to, if you look at schedule A, which I believe Lynn is a very near the front, probably the second page in of the. Of the submission that. From Center Brook. Not the letter, but the, the presentation slides that they submitted yesterday. Or you can stop at schedule A. That, that is the first amendment and it's very, very simple. And I misspoke before the minimum side yard setback was twenty feet and it's, we're asking it goes to five feet. And the maximum toll accessory building height is the, from fifteen feet to twenty five feet. So with the assumption that this commission finds these text amendments appropriate and approves them. We have, we have also need to have an amended site plan because originally the, there was no contemplation in July. Of moving this structure to a, a new location. So we need to amend the site plan to accommodate the, the change. And in that regard, I'm going to ask Mark Herter to come forward and explain what we're doing and how we're, how we're going to do it.
Thank you, Mark Herter from Center Brook Architects. So Lynn, if you go to the, the PDF of the PowerPoint. That we sent. You have that. So as, as she's finding that, I just want to say we're happy to be back here to present. Our updates on the legacy building based on the conceptual design plan that you approved back in December. So today, what I'm going to do is just walk you through, we've done a lot of work with our engineers and our landscape architects. To develop the plans that we submitted to you on August twenty fourth. So you should have that entire package from August twenty fourth. Which I, I have here. I'm going to go through a little bit of that. I'll be brief tonight. As you requested, I'll touch on a few of those drawings. I'll show you a few updated renderings. And I'll talk a little bit about our meetings with Wolf Building Movers to give you some details of how. The building will be moved and then I'll turn it back over to you for questions. So whenever we're ready with the PowerPoint, I can, I can go.
When, when did you send it?
I sent it yesterday. So I have a thumb drive if you need it.
Send me what?
Oh, sorry, go to, go back to the USP, click on a match. Legacy building relocation.
Has this been posted on the website?
It was submitted yesterday.
So we should continue this to the next meeting then. Wasn't submitted in time. We need the public to be able to see it five days before the meeting. It should be posted to the website and should be circulated to the rest of the commission. I call for this application to be postponed to the next meeting.
I think we should hear them out tonight. It, we, we can continue.
We haven't seen this.
Right, so let's.
But, but it's not part of the record. We're, we're just seeing it tonight. We've, we don't do that. We ask for the applicant to submit things ahead of time. So that not only we, but the public has time to review it.
But if we continue, the public will have time.
Yeah, so we'll continue it to the next meeting.
We've got the applicant here.
And Mister, Mister Chairman and, and members of the commission. We were mistaken apparently in, in our timing, but if we can present it tonight, everyone will have the opportunity to see it. We have no objection to it being continued. So everyone who has gets to see it can comment either tonight or the next meeting. It's fine.
I apologize for that. All right, so let's go through this quickly. I have twelve slides. So if you will go to, so slide number three. So slide number three is what Brian had referred to as the, the text amendment for the setback. You'll see that the building sits located location. Seven, a little over seven feet on the north side, a little over eight feet on the south side, essentially in line with the gas station. Next slide. That shows the building height elevation. So you'll see that it is taken from average grade to the mean height. Of the pitch roof, so nineteen feet, nine inches is the overall building height. Next slide. Yeah, so this is, so, so what I want to walk you through today. You know, the legacy building, it's on the northeast corner along Main Street and Cherry. It is going to be moved. If you go to the next slide. Relocated approximately seventy five feet from its current location, as I said. It'll be in line, effectively in line with the, with the service station. What we've developed in this plan, our goal is really to try and preserve the, the library green as much as we can. We've revised, given that there is added drainage, we've developed drainage plans. To achieve the runoff, we've extended the basin on the north side all the way to the west. We've developed, we've revised the, the accessible path coming from Cherry all the way to the terrace. So that it integrates with the new, with the stairs of the legacy building in its new location. And then between the existing live or the new library and the legacy building, we've developed a landscaped area. Which is a seating area with bosques, a basket of trees. Really nice space. So you'll see that in the, in the drawings that we submitted. You look at L three, L four. And L five, you'll see our materials layout, our grading plan and our planting plan for that whole area. And we've also revised the parking area to have a series of handicap spaces as well as a, a charging station over there. So if you go to the next slide, this is a view of the green. Legacy building sits within a campus where the two buildings complement one another. We preserved. The green so that it is contiguous and, and usable for events as we talked about in the original. All of the original presentations that we did, we've developed, as I said, a basket of trees between the new library. And the legacy building, we have an accessible ramp that comes from the south and goes to the entry. Of the, of the legacy building. And the stairs will integrate with the path coming from Cherry back to the terrace. And then if you go to the next slide. A view from the inside of the new cafe in the new building, looking back toward the legacy building. You see the space between developed with a basket of trees, a sitting area, really be a wonderful space between those built, two buildings. Along the edge of the green. Next slide. So just to give you an idea of some of the engineering work that we did, we've looked at all the drainage. There is added drainage that we need to handle. We've sent this to engineering. We've got some comments back from them. Essentially, we've taken care of all the drainage. By extending the basin all the way to the west of the property, creating a bridge over that. That is part of the walkway that goes from Cherry to the, to the terrace. We do have some comments from engineering that we will pick up. Next slide. What we've also done is taking care of the utilities for the new building. So they will be sanitary power, water will all be stubbed into. The legacy building. So that there will be utilities there provided. Next slide. So I'll just walk you through a little bit. We met with Wolf Building Movers. So they. They have moved many, many buildings, multi-story masonry buildings far larger than this. They're more than well equipped to do this. They've given us a lot of direction about how to deal with this and how they will deal with it. Will do selective demolition around the legacy building. They will then. On the backside of the legacy building where the walls don't exist, they'll infill that with masonry. In order to secure the building, they'll take the columns off, secure the portico. To the existing structure. And then they'll start to dig around the building. They need to remove a portion of the slab on grade. In order to be able to put beams running all the way north, south underneath the building. They will then have needle beams between those in order to be able to secure the structure. And then they will, once they have that, they'll separate the building. From the foundation, from existing foundation and start to jack it up. All of the stone, all of the brick on the base of the building will be taken off. Preserved and then put back on, on the new foundation and the new location. So I'm happy to go into more details about that. I know we're going to be coming back and I'm sure you'll have lots of questions. About the practicalities, how they do that, but effectively they will build a street. From the existing location to the new location so that they can. Wheel the building from one place to the other and put it on its new foundation. That's typically how they do it. Obviously over simplified, but the, the actual work to prepare it. Is, is substantial. The actual move will take no time at all comparatively. And then once it's on its new foundation, we'll restore it as we've shown. If you look at the A three oh two in our drawings. All the details of what we'll do for restoration of the building. So I'll stop there. I know we're coming back, but if you have any questions, happy to answer them.
I have a question.
Sure.
And if possible, if he could go back to the slide that showed the, the lawn, the colored. Yes, exactly. To the left of the pathway.
Yep.
What is in there? What's the purpose? And is that the area that the legacy building came from?
So it is not, however, where the cursor is right now on that image. Is just this side of that is effectively where the legacy building is right now. The, the, the landscaped part to the left of the path.
Yeah.
Is actually where the existing building is right now. So a lot of that building fronts along Main Street and takes up a lot of that side of the building. There's a, there's a small area. Just to the south of the legacy building in which the land goes down. And there's a, there's a lower level that you can actually see along Main Street. And beyond that is the nineteen seventy nine addition, some of which would have been in this view. But that berm, the purpose of that berm is. But that berm, the purpose of that berm is is multifold. As we talked about in some of the other presentations, it's supposed to handle some of um, the rainwater runoff. It's to develop a pollinator pathway. It's also to create uh, a landscape separation between the green and the street. And but it's also in order to, you know, we've limbed some of the trees up. You don't see all those in this image. In order to be able to develop a uh, communication between those as well. So we didn't want a strict separation. But we needed landscaped berm in that area.
To the left of the path is is going to be. What this shrubs and landscaping of some sort.
That's correct. And we we went through that in in pretty heavy detail in our original presentations of the site plan. Happy to go through it again with you, but um, we covered that a lot in the in the first presentation.
Ken Turner, um. It it appears that uh, the legacy building when it's moved. Um, will not have any utilities associated with it.
Actually, it does. We.
Could you, could you go through that in detail exactly what's being provided?
Yeah, so we have, if if you go back to last slide. And um, you look at the engineering drawings, we have, we have power, water, sanitary. Stubbed into the building on the south side.
The legacy building?
That's correct. Yes, we do.
Stubbed in, but no program. There's no bath, there's no bathroom being built.
There's, the building is not programmed yet and therefore, so if you look at our G zero zero two drawing, our code drawing. We um, within that drawing, we allow for either assembly or business. Based on that number and based on the program that the build that the library will develop for that. Will will have bathrooms within there. It's either going to be one or two bathrooms in that building.
And when will that happen?
Um, right now, the library is talking to a number of people about the use, potential use for that. I don't have an exact date.
I had a question. I was looking at the, I guess sheet Alpha one O one.
I'm sorry.
Alpha one O one.
Yes.
And you have the uh, it's a schematic of the uh. Floor of the building.
Yep.
And again, as uh, my colleagues have noted, there's no uh, lavatory or toilet noted here or kitchen or anything else. Are are the various interior walls, are those historic walls that are remaining? Are those ones you plan to put in?
So some of those walls that are there, this was, so this, these are dated August twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-two. Before we had some of our meetings with Wolf uh, building movers. We kept those walls because we didn't know how many of those they would need to brace the building. We understand from them now that those walls do not need to be there. They're going to cross brace it in order to move it.
Mm-hmm.
And so those walls are um, in that location because some of those exist currently. They can be moved wherever based on conversations with Wolf.
They're not structural or bearing walls or anything?
So the, so the, the, if you look in the attic.
Yeah.
It's a, it's a wood truss that goes across. In fact, um, those walls, we will brace the structure, but those walls are not structural.
Yeah, also I was looking at the, I guess, the back of the building.
Sure.
And on the southern, I guess, the southern two-thirds of it. Yeah, southern, um, it seems to be, is that a glass wall or what was that?
No, it's actually a cement masonry wall. It'll have brick veneer on the outside. So. When we were with you in December of last year, everybody, we had talked about the possibility of maybe doing stucco on that backside. In fact, we will not do that. All of you said no to that. Um, so brick veneer is is used in a number of areas on the building. So so on the corners, the corbels are all brick. Um, the rest of it is is masonry, stone. Um, we'll use brick on the backside. The, what you see in there, the infill is actually cement masonry units. And they need those in order to be able to ever embrace the building in order to move it.
And unlike the current building, which is not handicap cap accessible from the traditional, the original entrance.
Yeah.
You're planning to put in a handicap. Is that going to be the, this the only, that could be the only entry of the building? I don't see another one.
Um, that is the only entrance to the building right now. That is correct. Building is eleven hundred square feet interior space.
Mm-hmm. What I I question reveal my ignorance from a fire code.
No.
For public building, it's okay to dip them on entrance.
It it is, but it depends in part on the on the program and the use and part of that will uh. Be determined in the future.
So the fire marshal hasn't hasn't sort of blessed the final plans for this.
That's correct. Final interior layout plan says correct.
Okay, thank you. There's my question.
Sure. Quick question about um, your hazardous materials program. Could you give us an update on um? You've got some materials that have to be abated.
As they do, yeah, and there is a, there is a. Um, so Turner is uh, working with uh, a contractor to abate those. They they will be done. I mean, the existing building, not just the legacy building, but parts of the rest of the building. Whether it's um, sealants or tile or anything else, all of that has been evaluated already. So there are reports that we have submitted here that show, uh, in fact, all of the materials within the building. They are going to be abated before any demolition can can start. So that'll happen first and then they'll do the selective demo of the rest of the building around it.
Thanks. Will Wolf be producing a logistics drawing or a, you know, a coordination drawing on how they're going to? Needle and stitch the foundation as well as how they're going to um, move the building over?
Absolutely will. Yeah, so.
When do we do that?
So the way, I'm sorry.
When would we see that?
I don't know. So these are, these are design development drawings. We will go into construction drawings. And we will work on the details with them for not just the securing the structure when it moves, but ultimately. We with our engine structural engineer needs to upgrade code requirements for where it's, you know, it's new type for seismic. Um, we will work with them closely to determine. What um, they need when they move it and then what will happen after they move it. And so um, I don't know the date on that, but yes.
And I'm assuming Wolf has already visited the site and.
They've been there multiple times. We had multiple meetings with them. They definitely have a logistics approach as to how they're going to do it, which is what I briefly explained to you before.
Uh-huh. Okay, thank you.
Sure.
Can you talk a little bit about how the building, the nineteen thirteen building will be rehabilitated or restored after it's moved? I know you said, I know there's some pictures in the drawings you gave us, but for the public's sake, can you talk through what what the plan is?
Yeah, so the building um, as it is today, when it is moved, um. You you know, they'll they'll put plywood over the windows to make sure all the openings are secure and everything else. When it's back in its location. Um, the stairs will be rebuilt, all the piers will be rebuilt to its original. Um, foundation will have stone and brick as original, so stone and brick coursing. On the base will be carried all the way around the building, um, just as it is today. Um, windows um, are in good shape and will remain. We do have on the south side. Where those windows do not exist today, we're going to put windows in the openings, which were shown on the drawing on the screen. So that's the south side in the upper right corner. Those windows are going to go back as original. Um, the window on the north, um, which is lower right is is already there. And then the windows um, on uh, the upper left are in in good shape and are going to remain. Um, question of whether those get changed out or not is is still open. But um, if they are, all of the sightlines, all of the characteristics of the windows will match. As for the roof, the original building had a standing seam roof on it, which is why we are proposing that um, in the elevation.
Still. Oh, and and the pillars on the front, those, you know, you're keeping the original.
So those, those will be removed, stored, and then uh, there, there is some work. If you look on A three O two, there is some work to be done to those. Those will be repaired and they'll be put back in place. The cornice, all the, all the coining work, all of that will also be done.
Thanks. Quick question, as far as the foundation on the uh, legacy building, is that slab on grade? And have you done soil testing and you're done the calculations, you know that you can put that building there without impacting?
Talking about the existing building or the new?
The new location.
Yeah, so we have done geotech work. Um, we've evaluated all of the soils. We've worked with our structural engineer and civil engineer based on all that geotech work and we know we can put the building there. Yes.
Thank you.
Foundations are developed based on the, on the geotech work.
So my, given the limited square footage of about a thousand square feet.
Yep.
Um, for what's left of this shell. In order to attract program, I'm assuming when you discuss, when you say that the libraries. Trying to fill a program in there, they're probably talking to outside vendors or other people trying to. Attract people to use the space. Why wouldn't you run power? It, we know the square footage, we know how many, you know, a bathroom is going to be required. We know that it will need to be conditioned. Why would you leave that out at this point? Is it a budgetary concern?
I, I can't speak to that.
Because what we're afraid of, and I've said this during the meeting, that it's just going to become a glorified lawn shed with furniture in it.
Yeah.
And we don't want that to happen.
I understand that and um, I don't think that is the expectation of ours or the libraries.
But how can we be assured of that?
I I don't have an answer to that.
I can give an answer that, but the, actually, the library hasn't needed to go out and seek people. A lot of people are coming to it with ideas. Uh, but the reason not to put. I bathrooms or everything in place right now is because depending on the ultimate use. That that may change. You could, for example, I just give you an example, which is not what anyone's considering, but. A rare book room would require a different kind of HVAC than other programs. You don't want to do it twice. So that's, that's why we're not doing it now.
So, look, there's a lot of chatter out there. And. My question and Mr. Herter, you're probably not the right guy to answer this, but is the library committed? To have active, productive. Ongoing use of this space.
You're right, I'm not the right person.
I I've learned that over the past, I don't know, it's been a year, two years.
The, 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 the answer is yes, because. There there'd be no reason for them to be going through this entire exercise if that wasn't the end goal. So that the answer is yes. The timing is something we can't.
Okay, so Mr. Smith, you you're a lawyer, so you're the right guy.
Sure.
Um, what I would like to see for next month. Is, you know, some people say Reagan said this, other people said it was just attributed to him, but trust but verify. So what I would like you to think about is what comfort can be given to the commission? That the library and the commission can also potentially consider a condition. But you know, what comfort can be provided to the commission in next month's meeting? That the library is. You know, dedicated to an active, ongoing, productive use of this space.
Yeah, I'm not going to answer that now.
You don't have, I'm not asking you to answer me right now, but commissioners, my guess is I'm not alone in wondering about this.
Absolutely.
I I would, I would simply say that I I will, we will do that. I I would say that I think there were some misunderstandings by others in around town that 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 this was not happening, but. The fact is, there seemed to be a misunderstanding by some in the public that there were no utilities, nothing was coming, but this is all. Shown that we are in fact have the utility, all these different utilities ready to go. You're that, that's step one of answering your question, not all the steps I I grant you.
So you're saying the the package that's on the screen, the one we haven't seen yet? That has information in there about how the infrastructure is being run to the building?
Was in the plan set, was in the original plan set, I believe, wasn't it, the utilities?
So utilities are in the original plan set, yes. They they are stubbed into the building on the south side.
That was, that's always been there. I think people left to assumptions.
Just, just to be clear, so the building will have, be fully electrified. It will have a flush toilet in the base, in a basin somewhere in it.
That's the concept, that's the concept.
And HVAC.
Yes, correct.
Thank you.
I don't, I I I'm not sure that that was clear, that that question was answered. You're stubbing, you're stubbing out to accept.
Let me, let me clarify the question because you're absolutely right. There maybe we're talking about two different things. Ultimately. Your, yes, it will have power, it will have HVAC, it will have bathrooms. Currently, in the plan set that you have, utilities are stubbed to the building and that's it.
So they're actually stopping short of the building. They're in the lawn just before it on on sheet C U.
Yes, well, typically civil shows it to five feet outside of the building, but in fact, they are um, to the building.
I know, but that's the only drawing that I can see where utilities are indicated even going close to the building.
Understood.
So that's the trust but verify.
I get it.
Feeling we need to have.
Sure. Sure.
It's one thing to run to, you know, a six inch and a four inch PVC conduit to within ten feet of the building and call it a day when your. Site's wide open and you have a excavators onsite and you're throwing in four hundred dollars worth of PVC. It's another thing to actually pull utilities into a building with the intent of using them.
Understood.
Anybody else?
I I for one am very encouraged by the fact that the the missing document is going to answer so many. Of uh, my apprehensions, my nervousness, the answer, so many of the questions of the letters. This commission has been getting for the last few days, you know, asking us the questions we're asking you. So I'm so, I'm glad to hear that Wolf is on this, that they've given you great detail on how they're going to move the building. Um, and that you just, um, and that you intend to use it, you just don't know how yet, but you guys are excited. To use it as we are. So I think this is very good for the community and I'm very enthusiastic about your presentation, so.
Great.
Keep up the good work.
Thank you.
I just like to be clear on one thing, it's probably best for the lawyer as opposed to a user. Um, there, as I get it through two asks as part of this application, one is that the um. Uh, maximum height be extended up. So for an accessory building. And and this is a function of exactly how big the building is. So it's a function of, the cards have already been dealt as far as how the building is is structured. Okay, get that. Second is you want to move it fifteen-ish feet farther towards the Gulf Station?
Uh, correct.
Okay, and the reason for that is you want a bigger lawn.
Preserve open space. That is correct.
Got it, thank you.
Yes.
Is this on a slab or in a crawl space or a real basement?
So so the the drawings that you have from August twenty-fourth show it as a crawl space.
Yeah.
Um, we are working with Wolf on the details um, of whether it will be a crawl space or a slab on grade. So what they say is um, again, they're going to take these long beams, right? And needle beams and they're going to move this building over. Um, we thought originally they would need to have a crawl space in order to be able to. Sufficiently move it on to its new foundation. They do not. We could have a slab on grade. Regardless, we would still have to coordinate all of the underslab utilities based on bathrooms and everything else in there. So either way, um, it will be constructed effectively as we've shown. We don't know yet whether it will be crawl space or slab on grade. But we'll, we will absolutely coordinate all of the utilities for that.
Wouldn't it, wouldn't it behoove you to do crawl space just to future-proof it and give you that ability to? Run plumbing and mechanical wherever you need to. It's a single-story one thousand square foot space.
It's a fair question, um, given uh, it it's, it's a matter of timing. Um, if we know uh, its use and its bathroom locations, it's a fairly simple underslab coordination. Um, it would simplify construction and would reduce cost. So um, HVAC is going to be run. We have plenty of space in the attic.
Right.
Not worried about that at all.
Right.
Um, so that can easily be accommodated there. Underslab would really be, and even plumbing can go overhead. Sanitary obviously has got to go under. Sanitary obviously has got to go underslab for coordination, very minor and simple for this building footprint.
Anybody else? Okay. Commissioners, I, I was, you're, you're all set, right, Mr. Herter?
I'm all set.
Okay, great. I was originally going to take public comment tonight, potentially closing this. I think we've effectively agreed, we've all agreed, we're not going to do that. So commissioners, if you're comfortable, I think what I'll do is, and given to Mr. Radman's point, there is new information, a lot of it, which is positive. As I think what I'll do is take public comment next month. Everybody good with that? Okay, so this hearing is continued. Thank you. Okay, items eight, nine and 10 will be heard together. Item eight, 51 Main Street upon application Ryan Hoiler, Hinckley Allen, authorized agent, 51 Main Street owners for zoning regulation amendment to amend the zoning regulations. Date of June 16, 2007. Item number nine, 51 Main Street upon application Ryan Hoiler, 51 Main Street as owners for petition for change of zoning boundary for property currently located in B residence zone. And item number 10, 51 Main Street upon application Ryan Hoiler, authorized agent, 51 Main Street as owners for an 830G set of site, site plan application for property located at 51 Main Street. Ms. Hollister?
There's another one.
Good evening, Commissioner Goodman, Commission members, I'm Attorney Tim Hollister representing the applicant. Apropos of nothing, do you all know that Attorney Brian Smith, when he was in college, was a world champion fencer? So you never cross swords with him. So we are, we will be brief tonight. We have the team presenting myself, Mr. DeAndrea, our architect Chris Hall, Mary Blackburn, Kevin Soli, and Joe Versteg. I just want to know for the record that since we were here last, my former colleague Ryan Hoiler has left our firm. So you, I told this to staff, but the application can substitute my name going forward in terms of notice. So what we're going to do tonight is explain our October 18th dated narrative plans and and site plan revisions, which basically responded to the comments and questions and letters and memos that we received in July and August. I would just briefly explain. Town planner with justification took us to task for the delay we had originally projected September 30th. The truth is that we were consumed in September with Weed Street, and then when we finally turned our attention to 51 Main Street, we did decide to modify the building as you'll hear and see tonight. And as the saying goes, one change began another. I, I tried to keep the town planner informed as we were going through, but we ended up with the submission being six days ago. I, I do note that pretty much everybody, the peer reviewers and town staff apparently have been able to review what we submitted and provide written comments. And of course, after tonight, you do have 65 days to review and you can receive comment from your stat, town staff and the peer reviewers after tonight based on information in the record.
Excuse me, Attorney Hollister, what, what is our date? Is it Thursday?
Thursday is the, the hearing, unless you have a special meeting tomorrow or
So we need, otherwise we need to close tonight.
Correct.
Right, okay. I'm sorry to interrupt, please.
So that's okay. As I give you two items tonight, one is just a copy of the slides that, of the plans that we submitted last week. But as you'll hear from Mr. Hall and Mr. DeAndrea, we did yesterday morning notice a an item of involving fire separation that was needed to be clarified in the site plan so that what's labeled on the front page, the substitute sheets is intended to address that problem. So that's the second item I gave you, and I'll have Mr. Hall and Mr. DeAndrea explain that. So I'm going to turn it over to Mr. DeAndrea.
Leonard DeAndrea, Connecticut professional engineer, representing the applicant. We have slide two, I believe. It'll be the colored under in a bit. And the next one. Okay, the slide before you is colored to show you the separation of our two buildings now. In order to address a number of the comments, including a desire to retain the historic dwelling as a separate structure and also to provide an easy way for mail and delivery trucks and trash trucks to exit your driveway front first. The dwelling was kept intact and now is going to be moved forward, separated from the new building. And the new building will be pushed farther back towards the rear property line. The buildings now would be separated by about five feet and it will allow us to put an ADA compliant walkway in between the two buildings to the west and then turn and go out to the east to the sidewalk along Main. Another change we made was for the back out area to, again, to get these trucks to be able to maneuver without blocking the driveway, to be able to go out forward into Main is to add an attractive permeable paper design back out area that you'll see between the dwelling now and Main Street. And that has a nice radius in there, so delivery trucks such as FedEx, even trash haulers, a mail delivery, can either pull straight in, park in that loading spot, run in, make the deliveries, come back out, back into the double lane driveway and then go out headfirst. Or they could pull in headfirst and back into that loading area stage, go in, make deliveries and drive out. So that's, I think, a great improvement over what was there before. And it also is such the driver being 22 feet wide, that there's never a time when the driver would be completely blocked. And these delivery just takes a few minutes and maybe in the driveway itself for a few seconds. If you could go on to the next slide, please, Lynn. So in response to the initial DPW comments, we made a few changes to the stormwater management plan. One of the things is that driveway that is colored tan in there in front, it's a fairly large area, that's going to be a permeable pavement design.
Sorry, Mr. DeAndrea. Are these in your deck?
It should be, yes, these, these slides here should be just colored to make a little easier review.
Oh, you colored them.
Should be, right.
These are here, this is page three, thank you.
That's right, that's, that's the presentation, what you have in your hands there is the full set. So we have that now driveway in front, which will be a permeable pavement design. And we've taken the infiltration system underneath the, the building and pushed it farther back. And then we've also added a level spreader located in the same drainage path as it is for existing conditions. And that dream, level spreader, the idea of the level spreader is to allow the higher storm, if you have a design storm, but then you have a much larger storm. And first, as we've been asked to do, we control that peak rate of discharge, we also control the volume. And when you exceed that, you discharge it and we try to discharge it just like the existing conditions. Hence, the level spreader is located in the contours, within the contour areas that represents existing conditions. There's no concern for icing. We've heard this comment before, it's not like this gets pumped. It's not that we have a, a system in there that pumps this water out constantly and overnight and during freezing conditions. It's an overflow situation when you have rain effects. So in addition to that, when they overflow, and these are highlighted in this plan as well, in Vine Cottage on the driveway exiting out, you'll see two catch basins. And that's where anything that leaves the site will run through the driveway and be captured by those bases. When you go out on Main Street, soon as you turn immediately right out there, there's another basin right there as well. So it's, it's not something that will then move on through properties, move down through the town, it actually would be intercepted very quickly. Now, we did notice that today we, we checked, there are more DPW comments, we've scanned them, we went through them. I hope that we can be personally with your, your town engineer and sit down and go over them one by one and then provide the, any revisions or any, any responses. So we intend to do that. Now, these revisions we made by pushing things apart did result in a reduction in parking to 26 spaces, which is now a ratio of 1.3 spaces per unit. Another thing we did is we had the architect raise the building a little bit more so that when you go in under the garage, you'll have a full nine foot clearance. And we think that's a great idea because you need at least aid and change, a little higher is better, and that can accommodate all the ADA vans that could easily have a higher profile along the roof line. We introduced the walks, as we said earlier, you have them in between the two buildings. You have one in front and then you have one on the westerly side. Those will also be a permeable paper design. So the idea is to get as much water wherever we can into the ground as easily as we can. The pushing the building back, again, there's some sacrifices is you now have one corner of the building that southeastally corner will be about 1.1 feet from the property line. And of course, this is just on the corner and then it property line splays away from there to where you have a little over 13 feet southwest of the corner. There is no ground transformer presently on this property. There is one on the Divine Cottage, but not on this property. We have proposed one in the northwest corner in that, again, because of the number of units that are being proposed. This, of course, will ultimately have to be coordinated and approved by EverSource. In, posing again, we still have some, some work to do to satisfy your town engineer, but it is our opinion that the site plan as revised can be constructed and building operated with no public health or safety concerns, and we will continue to work with the DPW to address the remaining questions and comments.
So, Mr. DeAndrea, so the, the assumption is you'll work out the issues with DPW after we've closed this hearing?
I, that, that Well, no, we're, we're not going to engage in any post-hearing communication, that we understand that.
So Pardon me?
Hearing has to close tonight and they will
Right, so, but Mr. DeAndrea just said he's going to work with you.
I understood that, that was, that was not with my imprimatur.
Okay, so you're incorrect. So I assume I am incorrect and our responses will have to be written responses, okay?
We'll, we'll, we'll talk about it later with the instructions. No result. Opposing the hearing.
Good evening, I'm Chris Hall from CAH Architecture. As Mr. DeAndrea mentioned, we have decoupled the historic structure from the proposed building and are maintaining the trim windows, grid patterns, front railings, all the roof, all the components that the historic consultants mentioned were important to the building. And also the addition of this turnaround space allows us to push all the buildings back on the lot, giving a more of a, a, a front distance to the street. Also, the decoupling allows the historic structure to stand more on its own. And furthering some of the commentary we had, we switched the style of the rear structure, so it's not a mimicry of the existing building, but allows the historic structure to stand on its own and remain what it is. If we could go forward three slides, please. There's a, a picture of the, the new style. As Mr. DeAndrea mentioned, we did have to increase the garage height slightly in order to accommodate accessible vans. They were a little too tall for the height we had, but it's less than a two foot change in the overall height. I forget, I can say here. There are still 20 units in it, but due to the decoupling, there are now two residential units in the front building instead of the gym and one residential unit. And that gym is moved up to the upper story. Because of those changes, we did have to change some of the bedroom counts to accommodate the, the differing volumes. But again, it's, it's overall still 20 units. The slight revisions mentioned at the beginning of our presentation are really about the fire separation distance between the proposed and the existing building. And the changes are extremely minor. It's removal of one door from the parking garage level, one window from unit 202, and the elevator vestibule windows from the first and second floors. Additionally, we shortened the decks on the west side due to fire separation from the side yard and added the walkway from the rear. You know, rear stair to the town hall parking lot. We did do a slight modification of the plantings on SD 11 to more accurately reflect what was shown in the planting plan as well, the, the trees were a little bit too tall and extended too far along the site lines. We could maybe just scroll through the, the rest of the slides. Kind of shows it in context, that's more of the unit breakdown. Next one, please. Further unit breakdown. There's, you know, looking up from the intersection to the building, so it shows the historic structure being preserved there in the front. Go to the next one. Really not even see it from that way. It's hidden by all the plantings and adjacent property. Thank you.
Good evening, for the record, my name is Mary Blackburn, I'm a registered landscape architect in the state of Connecticut with solely engineering in Monroe, Connecticut. I will bring you through the changes to the landscape and the lighting plan. Which, Lynn, if you can go to slide 17. Yeah, this, this is, oh, back one, we had it. Slide 17. I'll start in the northwest corner and kind of go counterclockwise around the property. So in the northwest corner, you have the transformer location and the proposed sidewalk. Inconsistent with EverSource's requirements, we're proposing an evergreen screening with about three feet of clearance around that, and then the 10 foot clearance for the door functioning on the one side of the transformer will be on the west side where you have the sidewalk. There is an existing hedge on the west property line there that will be maintained on the other side of the sidewalk. And when you get to the end of that, about halfway back, we're proposing a six foot high solid fence that will run from that point to the entry of the stairwell on the second building, the rear building. After that, there's a drainage structure on the west side of the building there, so we are proposing decorative crushed stone on the ground. And the existing trees, as you saw in the rendering on the adjacent property, will all remain there in the back. I guess it would be the southwest corner, there's an existing retaining wall. And we have some evergreen rhododendrons proposed in that corner. And then along the back, which would be the south facade, we're proposing a mixture of ornamental shrubs, deciduous, or sorry, ornamental grasses, deciduous shrubs and evergreen shrubs as a mixed foundation planting. So coming around on the east side, we have the parking. We're proposing a small strip of lawn immediately adjacent to the parking and then some five to six foot tall native ornamental grasses. And then as you move kind of closer to Main Street, as Lynn said, there's a level spreader there. So in this area, proposing shrubs that are more suited for wet conditions like button bush and iris and some sweet spire, then some sky pencil holly. Some sky pencil holly will be proposed next to the dumpster and that fencing. And then as we get around to the front of the historic building, um, we just have foundation plantings. That are more of like old fashioned plants, um, consistent with like a cottage garden, roses, hydrangeas and perennials. We go to the next slide. Um, so the lighting plan was revised. As requested, we've modeled the lights that will be in the canopy of the parking area. We've actually eliminated all the wall, um, scants fixtures. And the remaining lighting will be recessed, um, as previously shown. We have also added. Some pathway fixtures along the proposed sidewalks, which will all be dark sky compliant and full cutoff. That covers it. Landscape and land.
Where's the six foot fence that you referenced?
Um, so we can go back to slide seventeen. So about halfway on the west side to the top, about halfway back. Um, for the historic building is where it begins. That's where the existing hedge ends. And it's like the line and circle and of line type that you can see on the plan and it extends thirty six feet back. Um, to where the door is at the stairwell of the new building. Yes. Almost to where like the parking begins, um, because that's where the the stair stairwell is.
Okay, thanks. Are you um solely working on the lighting for the lower level? G two seven one?
Uh, yes.
Just a question, uh. The garage is effectively open, open air garage. You can see into it, especially from Main Street and adjacent properties.
Yeah, portions of it are.
Yep, yeah, and the. The R one fixtures, I'm assuming are recessed fixtures.
Yeah, so those are under the proposed balconies.
But the C one fixtures are big eight foot. Open lens fixtures that will illuminate the garage. Is that right?
So those are four foot. I mean, if I can verify that, but yeah, they're four foot, um, ceiling mounted fixtures, kind of like the linear. There's a detail there.
I would just ask to revisit the lighting strategy in the garage, um. To try and prevent a well glare and over illumination of visible fixtures. Something that we ran into on the view and you can see that when you drive down Park Street at night or. Up Richmond Hill at night, the lobby of the view is. Stage center, over illuminated glowing in the distance and I'm sure very obnoxious to all the neighbors.
Yeah, so these are four foot fixtures and I think the mats they are. Pretty minor light levels. We have modeled it here. So they are.
Change the fixtures to shielded fixtures?
Yeah, they're not recessed, but um, you wouldn't see them with the thickness of the.
Right, but just looking to make sure that the cutoff that there is cut off on there, so it's not visible from adjacent properties. And is there, is there any mechanical equipment or generator or anything on the lower level?
Sorry, Chris Hall again. Uh, no, there's there's not proposed generator or anything like that on in the uh, in the site.
So was there any mechanical equipment on the roof or what's left of the roof that quadrant?
We will have some up there.
So will that be the? The garage for all the condensers for all the units will live up there?
Yes.
And is there enough space for it?
There is, there is.
I had a question on the border between the site and Vine Cottage. The picket line of uh, small trees or bushes. Uh, how much space is there between the property line of the neighbor and the end of the paved surface?
Going out to the east on Vine Cottage?
Yeah. Long picket line, I seen the picture of.
Oh, the ornamental grasses on the either side of the staircase?
No, this is uh facing towards Vine Cottage. Sierra Delta dash eleven.
Yes, so that, um, as Chris mentioned, the rendering was, I believe, resubmitted to update. Um, that planting because it doesn't come all the way out through the driveway.
It doesn't.
Correct. It stops at the dumpster as shown on the landscape plan.
Oh, I'm looking at this picture and it goes all the way to the street.
Right, so I think we submitted updated plans on that show. That revised to correctly reflect.
Okay, so that would be. Uh, that would be page two spot six one.
Yes, that has the.
The new and improved.
Well, that's the planting plan, but he you did um submit a CR eleven that is updated to show.
Sorry, there's a, there's an SD eleven sheet that we submitted in a a small addendum packet.
Yeah, I see that SD eleven is the picture.
Uh, yes, but perhaps Lynn, do you still have the sets? Yes, the addendum set.
This is the one given was tonight, so I assume it's.
Correct.
It's current. Yes, this was submitted today, so or tonight, so I'm assuming.
This, this.
Uh, this set, not this set, okay. So SD eleven, hold on, let me find that. Uh, here we are, SD eleven, got it. Wrong SD eleven.
Sorry for the confusion.
Okay, so um. It would be essentially to the uh back of the. Uh, older house or at least what's going to be retained at the older house. Draw a line. Over to Vine Cottage. And that's where the plantings would begin. Otherwise, it would just be. I guess a driveway and then it just stops right at the property line.
Yes.
And the picket line that will exist, what's the, how wide is that going to be?
Um, so right at the dumpster enclosure, that is about two to three feet. Um, hence the sky pencil hollies, which go about two to three feet and six to eight feet high. And then as you move further back south. The distance, I believe, goes to six feet. For the remainder of the property there.
To start shorter and get bigger as you go back.
Yeah, so it's only two to three feet um for maybe five to. Eight feet where that dumpster is and then it expands to a width of six feet.
And on the side, the other side of the building where the condos are. Let's see if I can find that one. There are a few bushes. Now in existence, um, between the older house and the. And the neighbor. And then the, as Mr. Um. Just your angle mentioned that. Ends about where the the build, the old building ends or.
Correct.
Is planned to end since you're going to move the building. And then there, it's just, there could be no plantings, just some gravel and such.
There's a um six foot high solid fence where that hedge ends and that would extend. Back to the stairwell of the proposed building where the entry door is to the stairwell. And then, yes, after that, um, there's a drainage structure there. So we're. Uh, our level spreader, I believe, so we are choosing um. A crushed decorative gravel ring.
Thank you. My question, Mr. Chairman.
I have some questions for the architect. So I just wanted to get some clarity um on the historic building and what is being kept exactly? Um, is the be building being kept in its entirety?
Uh, the, yes, it the it is kept in its entirety, except for there's a little. Like angled shed that was on the back that's being removed. And then the, there's a strangely pitched roof on one story part that's going to become a deck. On the back side.
That's not the avalanche roof.
No, that's on the front. That's the main roof, which will definitely remain.
And it's being moved from fifty two feet back from the street to nineteen point seven feet back from the street. And so the avalanche roof on the front is remaining.
It is.
Are all of the existing windows remaining?
They are.
Are any windows being added?
Uh, on the back side, there are windows being added and one of the existing windows, there's a small addition under the porch. So one of those existing windows is going to move to the front of that addition.
Hi, and the fretwork porch railing is remaining?
Well, it's going to be reconstructed because it's destroyed essentially.
Okay, so we you are keeping all the queen and.
We are.
Windows.
Yes.
The actual glass and everything.
Exactly, yes.
Okay, those are my questions.
Thank you.
So I'm intrigued by the the wall. Um, we talked about the six foot fence on the west side, but. If I, um. It it's hard to tell from the measurement, so I looked to the elevation, but it seems to be somewhere between a nine foot. Maybe as high as eleven foot opaque wall of stone around the entire perimeter. To block the view of the cars.
On, yes, on the west side.
How tall is that wall?
Uh, let's see, let me.
No, it looks like it's on the east side between the Vine Cottage and the cars is a wall. Is some sort of a barrier.
Uh, yes, yes, it's it's.
Speckled gray.
It's eleven feet tall.
It's an eleven foot tall wall.
Yes, correct.
Made of what?
Made of stone, stone, concrete faced.
Concrete.
Yes.
And it'll be faced in concrete?
In stone.
It'll be, oh, it'll be stone faced, concrete, stone veneer. Eleven feet tall, um. Don't we have a regulation if I put a a wall up on? Isn't it six feet? Or re- remind me what the regulations are for front and side.
The problem that we have is they're proposing a zone.
Well, I I know, but I'm just wondering how can, you know, we have six foot somewhere uh on the west side. But everywhere else is eleven feet. It's basically a wall around the entire property of eleven feet tall.
Yeah.
And nowhere else in town does that exist, does it? And and so I'm just wondering, what are the regulations everywhere else? Because I remember it being six feet. Lower from eight to six.
Yeah, let's.
In eighty nine, right?
Little brief us on the, well, that was for fronts.
That's what I'm asking.
Yeah, yeah.
So only for fronts, six feet.
No, four.
Four.
Four in the front.
Four in the front.
Edge of the front yard setback and to the side yard to then and then from the side rear, it's six feet.
Thanks. If I may, though, these aren't retaining walls. These are, these are building walls.
Retaining walls have to be four feet.
Right, right.
Okay, I just.
But I think what what he's saying is that these are not freestanding walls.
Yeah, these aren't walls. These are just part of the building.
Structure, the building structure.
Explain that to me because it seems to me that there it's a freestanding wall, skinny wall, just to protect my view of the cars.
It's it's holding the building up above.
Oh, it is?
It is.
That's what's not. Clear from these and I I've looked at all of these, but it's not clear to me. How it, how this wall is integrated into the.
Yeah, it's it's literally part of the structural system. It's it's.
On the west side, but what about on the other side?
On the west and the north side. It is the building.
What about on the east side between it and Vine Cottage?
There, there are, there's no wall there. It's just piers.
There's no wall there.
Yeah, it's right here.
Okay. What am I looking at on SD nine that is nine, eleven feet tall and gray?
You're looking in seeing the ceiling of the parking garage?
Okay, why, which is why Mr. Radman was concerned about lights.
Right. So on the, on the right side of the of the new mass, you are seeing that vertical wall you mentioned, but you can see there it's underneath the corner of the building.
Yeah, I guess I was mostly concerned with an SD four. It looks like a eleven foot. Wall, the length of the property on both the west and the east elevation.
No, they're they're not freestanding walls. So on on the west elevation is a solid wall there along the parking, but on the east, it's just piers. There are no, there's no wall on that side.
Okay, so I'll be able to see the cars.
The cars are actually halfway up the building.
John, look at the building section on SD six.
Right.
On the left, you see it's open.
Yep.
On the right, you see the wall.
Yep. So we're screening the cars with those uh arborvit.
Yes, with the plantings there.
Got it. Okay.
How did, um, you said you increased the height of the garage to nine feet?
Correct.
Did that have any effect on the overall height of the building?
It's uh under two feet differential in the building height.
You mean the building got two feet?
It's a little tall. It's a little taller.
Okay, two feet.
Yes.
Okay. And what is, I I guess I just don't know enough to understand the purpose of this transformer that's literally in the front yard. Could you explain it to for somebody?
Uh, I mean, I know the basics of it.
More than I know.
It's it's really literally just to provide enough power to the building. So it's a requirement by the the electric utility. It's not something we want. We absolutely don't want it, but it's something that the utility company is requiring.
And is there no other place we could put it? Could it not be buried? Like it has to literally be in the front yard in front of this building?
Man, is that a question for you? Very expensive.
We we get asked that question often, uh, a few years back. They would allow you to build a vault and they just don't do that anymore. So. When you get into a number of units like this, twenty or so, you know, previous projects, apartments of this size. You do have to provide a transformer. If you look like on Vine Cottage, there's one right across from the town hall entrance. It's a similar purpose to serve a a building of a certain size. So we 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 recognize that one's going to be required. And when the MEP gets involved, mechanical engineers, electrical engineers, they'll interface with ever source and they'll uh fine tune the location. And the size of that building. We don't know exactly how big it's going to be. We have a field for it right now.
So, so if I look at the picture correctly, SD eleven in the new mini newer.
Yes.
And I look at the front yard of this or. Uh, reduced size or front yard of the older building. Um, there's a transformer with some bushes around it and most of the rest of it in front and to the side. Uh, towards the town hall, the century to be all paid. And the part, the pay part directly in front of the uh. Older building, um. May have a a van there delivering stuff. Number of times during the day.
It could, yes.
So that is what we'll be facing, uh. Into the town green and then our historic district. That's the the view shed of this part of the building.
Yes, I mean, I think that's that's typical of of any building these days to have the delivery vehicles in multiple times a day.
Thank you.
Okay.
Uh, this is a question for the architect. Um, he began with, uh, or you began with a question. Or a statement that there had been some quote adjustments to the bedrooms. Can you characterize what those adjustments were?
Uh, sure, absolutely. So it it originated with the switch of the front building from having the. The fitness center on the first level to having another residential unit. So, um. You know, that required reconfiguration of the building, so we didn't increase the uh count of the apartments in the building. So, you know, we basically redid the the floor layouts of of uh. Three of the of the four primary floors, uh, slightly, uh, which resulted in. And. Uh, changing, we changed to uh three-bedroom units. Uh, we have, I believe, five three-bedroom units now. Sorry, my eyes aren't quite good enough to read my printout. Uh, could we go to S D six on the screen, please? It should be page nine. Great, thank you.
Yes.
Um. I don't think I can see that any better. Oh, could you, could you zoom in on the, the uh unit schedule in the top left corner?
Doesn't let me because of the way the format you guys submitted it in.
Oh.
Upload it with our security protocol.
So, so I had tried to read that schedule when it was showing up there before. I also could not read it. My question, and perhaps you can answer this without going to that schedule, is how many bedrooms total were there before? How many of those were in affordable units? How many are going to be there in the proposed design and how many will be in the affordable units?
Uh, sure, I can uh do that calculation. It'll, it'll take me just a second here.
Thank you.
Sure, thank you.
Mr. Hall, uh, Commissioner Cassavina, this is Tim Hollister. I think I can help you with that. So in the previous, the original plan, there were. Nine one-bedroom units and eleven two-bedroom units. And the affordable units were six in total and spread out three, three among the one bedrooms and three among the two bedrooms. In the revised configuration, there are five one-bedroom units, eleven two-bedroom units. And four three-bedroom units, and the affordable units are spread uh to. Chris grave, correct if I misspeak, there's two among the one bedrooms. No, I'm sorry, is it one, four and one?
Yeah, two, three and one. Two one-bedrooms, three two-bedrooms and one three-bedroom.
Yeah, did you hear that? Uh, Commissioner Kasim, two one-bedrooms, three two-bedrooms and one three-bedroom are the affordable unit. So it's still six. And it's still among the unit types and it's still dispersed around the building.
Thank you, uh, Mr. Hollister. That's, that's, or that that answers my concern.
Thank you.
Good evening, members of the commission. I think it's my turn. Uh, my name's Kevin Solely. I'm a licensed professional engineer uh in the state of Connecticut with sole engineering. I'm also a uh, a current designation of a professional traffic operations engineer. Um, we prepared the traffic study. And the updated traffic study in response to a lot of the comments um raised at the last hearing and through the peer review comment letters. Um, you know, at the last hearing, we talked a lot about access. We talked a lot about how cars would get in, how cars would get out. Um, and, you know, a lot of the discussions were, were obviously focused on the driveway, the ability for vehicles to kind of turn around. Um, I think as we've discussed tonight, that was the biggest change that we were able to incorporate into the, to the design drawings. So we, we've done it to a few things. We actually made the driveway longer as part of the change, and then we also provided that turnaround in front of the. Um, historic building to allow for any and all vehicles to have the ability to um turn around. So every vehicle leaving this driveway can pull out, um, facing out and avoid the issue and the concern of vehicles having to back into that intersection. Um, so uh, that was the, you know, in in my opinion, that was the biggest concern and and challenge that we had with the initial application. And we're very excited that we were able to make those revisions to address that issue. Um, we revived, we, we did provide a revised traffic report. Another one of the things that we discussed was um, the, how the driveway is managed. As it is within the limits and constraints and the confines of that overall signalized intersection. Um, as we, uh, as I testified at the last hearing, you know, we did, one of the first things we did when we um. Uh, looked at this project was called the D O T. We reviewed the site, reviewed the, how the current driveway exists, where it exists in relation to the signal. And we talked about how, what the project scope was and how they would envision um. The future access being maintained and managed as part of this project. And again, from a trip generation standpoint, I just want to, you know, reiterate. The, we are talking about twenty apartments. Um, utilizing rates from the trip generation uh manual from I T E, we're looking at a total of uh. Uh, seven trips in the morning peak hour and six trips in the afternoon peak hour. So that's um, four coming, three going in the morning. And three coming, three going in the evening. So that's, again, it's essentially one car every twenty minutes, approximately fifteen to twenty minutes. Depending on the morning, the, the period. Um, when we talk about those types of volumes, when we look at a signal like this, you know, the D O T's initial response was. It's such a small volume, we probably wouldn't want to control it as part of the signalized operation of the intersection, but we can work through that as part of the encroachment permit process. Um, as we know, we've been discussed with the, with the towns peer reviewer. Um. You know, we did want to analyze if we could add this as an additional approach to the signalized intersection. And we provided that analysis in our revised report. And what that analysis shows is that the signal will continue to maintain acceptable operations. It will not have an adverse operation, uh, adverse impact to the operations of that signal, even if we added an additional signal head to control. Our approach in vehicles exiting our, our site. Um, you know, we didn't, uh, you know. We didn't make a wholesale recommendation to include this in the signal operation, because again, our initial conversations with D O T said. You know, with those volumes, we don't know if, if we would, if we would recommend incorporating that into the signal. But we're certainly willing to and provided the analysis and and we'll do whatever the D O T requires as part of their review of this process. Again, this is a D O T signal. Um, they control the intersection. They manage how um, that signal will operate. And ultimately, they're the um, uh, you know, final arbiters on how access will be managed. And everything they do has to be done in a way to ensure that they're safe and adequate um, uh, control for vehicles coming in and out of the site. To ensure that there's no uh safety impacts or anything else that would impact the life, health and safety of of vehicles either coming in or out of the facility. Or just driving on Main Street. Um, so ultimately, they, they will decide and we'll work with them. And we will satisfy whatever requirements that they have, but from a, from a traffic impact, from a trip generation impact, again, we're talking about. One car every twenty minutes, roughly. Um, you know, we did receive revised uh comments from Mr. Thompson, the towns peer reviewer. And he did again, express some concerns about the operations. You know, again, I think we, we need to somewhat rely on what the D O T will. Will, will ultimately require, um, but will satisfy the requirements. In his peer review comment letter, he did actually make a comment regarding. Um, our uh trip generation, and he made a note about the land use code that we're using for the trip generation. Um, actually, as part of uh the uh, this and the other affordable housing application before the commission. Um, there was actually some uh question back to I T E about those trip generation rates. And I guess the, through my reading of the comments and the responses from I T E, there is potentially a concern with whether the cars entering or exiting are switched. Um, but again, we're talking about three coming, three going. So even if those um, those trips were to be updated based on whatever information that they have. We aren't talking about a wholesale increase in traffic or potential, you know, cause for concern. So um, we don't necessarily see that as a, as a major issue. Um. The, you know, again, we talked about, I think I talked a lot about how uh, how the traffic needs to be managed. And again, ultimately, that's a D O T decision. And um. You know, the only other comment that Mr. Thompson and Maine had, we had to do was regarding intersection site distance. Now, we provided intersection site distance, showing that, again, this is an existing driveway, there are existing vehicles in town employees that park in that lot. Leave that lot. There isn't any history of accidents um through this area. And again, because when you look at an intersection like this. The way this intersection is managed, you have Main Street, which goes, you know, green in both directions. And then that. That signal turns yellow. There's almost four seconds of yellow time to allow vehicles to clear. And then there's almost four seconds of all red time, where all approaches have a red light to allow for vehicles to clear the intersection. So that's ultimately almost eight seconds of yellow and red just for the Main Street approach. Then you have the individual approaches are controlled separately because of how the, what the geometry is. Each one of those has yellow time, and then they each have all red time, two seconds and 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 one second. Um, so when you, when you look at the overall intersection, if we're looking at a vehicle leaving our driveway once every twenty minutes. We have a ninety-second cycle length. You have continuous cycles where the, the mainline traffic will stop. It'll be all red. The minor approach will go, the other minor approach will go. Each one of those has a red phase. So from a, from a site distance standpoint, there's. I've, I've pulled out of this driveway several times myself. There's more than adequate visibility to see all the stop bars, see where the cars are coming, see what the approach, what the, what the. Um, lights are doing, how they're being controlled and managed. It's not as, it's not a, it's not as um. You know, I don't believe it's as, as hard to see and understand how the intersection operates when you're sitting there, because you can see all the approaches. And you have adequate time so that if, if, if the D O T elects not to control this approach, there's still more than adequate time to control. Or or to allow for vehicles to take a safe exit and either turn right or left or wherever, considering all those red times. And again, the D O T, if they say they want to include the signal, the, the approach in the signal operations, they'll require us to do that and we'll satisfy those requirements. So we believe that that addresses the potential site distance issue. And again, when the D O T looks at something like this, if the site distance issue isn't looked at, they look at stopping site distance. So that this is for, if we're leaving our driveway looking left up Main Street, they want to ensure that the vehicles coming down Main Street would have adequate time to stop. Based on where, if they saw a vehicle pull out, and there's more than adequate stopping site distance again. So with the, with the, with the presence of the traffic signal, the control of those vehicles, how those are being managed. And the minimal trips associated with this development, you know, it's my professional opinion that this project will not have an adverse impact on traffic operations. And it will not represent any potential safety issues. Um, but you know, any public health or safety concerns regarding the, regarding the site. Um, so with that, I'd be happy to answer any other questions that the commission have, or I believe I'm passing it on to Joe Verstij to talk about fire.
Have you, um, have you seen the letter from Simco?
I have, and the letter from Simco, it, for some reason, it seemed as if they weren't aware that we updated our traffic study. It actually says we didn't update our traffic study. Which was incorrect, because Mr. Thompson saw our updated report, provided a comment letter. So I think Miss, the, the engineers from Simco seem to have just missed that part of our packet.
Okay. Um, back in July, when you were not incorporating this uh development into the signalized intersection. You said that the D O T said that you didn't need to, and I'd asked for copies of correspondence that you'd had with the D O T about that. Have, is that something you've provided for the record?
It is, yes. It was included in our revised traffic study at the end. So there's a series of emails and it summarizes both. Um, a conversation we had with the D O T and it provides um, you know, the correspondence back and forth. So it's the last three pages of the traffic study. The last page is the signal plan, and then right before that are um, is the email correspondence with Colleen Byrne from my office. Um, Ethan Doniker from the D O T, Matt Bloom from the D O T regarding our discussion of the project. The driveway, how it's currently managed and how we would propose to, or how they would want to see it managed in the future.
Okay, thanks. I see that now. Um, so this new turnaround in front of the building. Um, on some level, it seems like it improves things, but it also seems challenging. So for instance, a garbage truck pulling in is going to pull in, go straightforward. Load the trash from the trash enclosure, assuming this is your area. You're looking at me like maybe.
Yes, no, no, I can, I can handle this.
Um, and then back into the turnaround and and come out. So during that time, cars aren't going to be able to really enter the site. I mean, I guess they could get in, but then they're stacked behind the garbage truck that's maneuvering. Cars aren't going to be able to leave the garage, and the same is true when you have Amazon coming to deliver packages. You know, you're. You're in the middle of an intersection, so it's not like cars who want to enter the site can queue up in the intersection to wait for the Amazon truck. Or the trash truck to leave. So how exactly does this work?
Well, we do have a twenty-two-foot wide driveway, so there is adequate room for a, you know, if a garbage truck came in and was at the dumpster. There's enough room for another car to come in and and squeak by it. Um, you know, regarding the Amazon vehicles, um, you know, a, 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 again, the frequency of those. You know. It's not as if those vehicles would, you know, make twenty trips for twenty apartments. They consolidate their deliveries. They'd come once a day. Um, and they'd offload all those packages to the apartments, um, you know.
Make twenty trips to my house.
Know where you lived.
Um, well, there's, there may be, there may be U P S, there may be FedEx, there may be Amazon. So I'm not trying to say that. The different Grubhub, uh, Instacart, uh, all of them. Um, but, but again, those, you know, I think that. Uh, th- there's. With only twenty apartments and the, the presence of that turnaround now, it allows for that to be managed. So that you're not creating uh, an issue with this, with the intersection.
Sir, I, I, I think the, I just worry that the idea of a turnaround is really a um. Not correct. Uh, if I'm, if I'm driving, I'm not going to want to drive and park in the driveway. I'm going to see this. Pull out, the sand is going to pull in there, then I'll back around into the driveway and then pull out. And so as part of the view shed for our uh town green and historic district, we're going to have vans parked in front of the. Old house is what I think is going to happen. And I think that the idea that they're going to pull up into an active driveway, then want to back in. I wouldn't do it. And, and so one of the concerns I have is any harm that can be done is, that would be done. To our historic district and irreplaceable historic assets of the town. And the, the paving that essentially is replacing much of the front lawn. Uh, and the transformer are. Concerns of mine as well as a um, essentially a pullout right in front of an older house, the historic house. That could be used, I think, much more frequently than. Perhaps you are suggesting, and that again, this becomes a um, a view shed issue of potential concern to me. That's my worry.
It, it's basically going to become a loading dock.
That was where I'm going with this, is my, my sense of this. Uh, I've seen any number of, of uh, delivery vans park and they. They're not going to want to park in an active driveway, uh, if at all possible. Um, it's a concern of mine. So want to put that out there on the record.
I certainly think we can, we can um, provide some signage, no standing, you know, and make it clear that that really is just for vehicular. Uh, circulation and not something that we want to introduce or invite uh. Um, that type of thing, because there's adequate width in the driveway. So if a Amazon van or something else comes in and pulls in front of the dumpster. That to do their offloading, they can do so and any other vehicles can still get in and out without causing that view shed concern.
Well, and I'm, I've, I've been involved in design of any, let's say warehouse. Turning radiuses aren't big enough for the trucks. They will make a turning radius that works and they'll roll over anything in their way.
Mm-hmm.
There's, yep, and, you know, I'm not sure a sign there saying don't park is going to. And I'm not sure that's going to generate that much traction. That's my worry, that in effect, we're going to end up with a, a van parking in front of a historic house. Right up on the road, uh, right across from our town.
Well, well, again, I think is, is with anything is, you know, when you look at, you know, trash removal and stuff and you try to manage that, it's really up to the operator. To work with their vendors to ensure that they understand how the site needs to operate. I think you can, we can certainly incorporate some, uh, you know, training with those operators. And and again, like you. I certainly get quite a few Amazon deliveries and it's usually the same person. So we kind of, you know, my kids wave to them and say hello, and I'm sure an operator here could develop similar relationships with whomever may be delivering to this part of. Part of New Canaan and ensure that they can manage that in a way to, to protect against your concern.
But again, I mean, the broader view shed is that we had discussed in prior meetings that. Uh, about half the cars are going to be sticking out from underneath the building and visible. Uh, very close to the property line with, I will say, in my view, not the most robust planting pan, plan. Given there's a pretty skinny amount of dirt in which to stick plants. Uh, we also have potential damage from uh, from plows and so forth. And a lot of that snow that's going to fall on those, you, you go out and you're going to brush it all now, Aaron. It just creates um. Challenges from that as well as, uh, again, impairment of the view shed of our historic district. And so it's um. Potential irrepro. potential irreparable damage to uh vital historic assets for our town and the state that is of concern to me.
So I, yeah, so I, I think we can discuss that as part of our deliberations. I don't think you're giving us any helpful. I, I'm not sure I could, I, I, I agree.
Yeah, okay. Not going anywhere with this. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Excuse me, a question about level of service?
Yes.
Um, it looks like we're going from a B to C on Main Street. For the twenty twenty-four.
Sure, I'll pull that up.
And then on the site driveway, it's uh an A to an A.
So um.
I'll follow that. Could you clarify?
Sure. So, so what we like to report is um you know, I just want to make sure I'm looking at the uh. Are you looking at the table on page? Of course, I have page numbers.
There's no page number.
So we ran the analysis in, in two ways. So we have table two, which is a capacity analysis for um uh, as if our exiting driveway wasn't part of the signal. Okay? Um, so that actually shows when you look at uh, we have to analyze, one of the things we did is we analyzed up to the background period. So we actually pushed out the construction to twenty twenty-four. And we have to compare our impacts against how they operate in twenty twenty-four. So we're actually um in all of those scenarios, eastbound Main Street maintains a C in both periods, southeastbound from Heritage Hill maintains the same level of service, a D in, in both periods, the southwestbound Locust Avenue maintains D's in both periods and um, in the background and build scenario and um, westbound Main Street maintains Bs in, in all scenarios. So there's no actually degradation of operating conditions. Um, if our driveway wasn't incorporated into that operation. The next table three of our traffic study looks as if we were to incorporate um uh, an additional signalized approach for our driveway. So that would essentially add right now, again, Main Street gets yet gets green. Then it turns off, then um Heritage Hill goes, then Locust goes. We've done an analysis to make it most conservative where Main Street would go, Heritage Hill would go, Locust would go, and then our driveway would go. Um, and that would again, only get called when there's a vehicle trying to leave, so wouldn't be very frequent. Um, in that scenario, when you look at uh, traffic operating conditions, again, we broke it down by approach. From an overall standpoint, if you look at the signal as a whole, it maintains a level of service of C. We always want to take an over, a, a comprehensive look and, and look at each individual approach and how those operations are impacted. Again, eastbound on Main Street maintains a C in, in both scenarios, Heritage Hill maintains the same D in both scenarios. Locust Ave maintains D's in both scenarios. Um, westbound Main Street, to, to your point, in the morning, it does go from nineteen point two seconds of delay to twenty-one point six seconds of delay. Um, and then it maintains a B in the uh, afternoon peak period. Um, you know, I think is actually was actually uh reinforced in uh Mr. Thompson's review memo for an urban environment like this. Suburban, but this type of intersection with this type of traffic, that's a, that's a very acceptable level of service. So going from a B to a C doesn't really represent a, a public health or safety concern from a traffic standpoint.
And could you explain the uh site driveway? How, why is that zero?
Well, that's zero because so the, the, the level of service in the is, is, is a, uh, effectively a letter grade based on the average amount of delay experienced at that approach. And then from a signal as a whole, you look at that in the aggregate. So when you look at the number of trips that we have coming out of our driveway and we plug this into our, uh, we use a, a software called Synchro. And plug into the, into our um analysis, it actually reads because there's only three cars coming out in an hour. On average, those cars won't experience any delay. Um, from an overall signal operation standpoint, so.
Well, does it assume they're turning right?
Not necessarily, no. But it could assume that they may come out and there may either be all red or there may be a gap to allow for those vehicles to make that maneuver. Um, and I think again, it's because it's such a, such as a small volume. It, it's hard for them to, you know, really register in any substantive way. All right, I think I'm going to pass it on to Joe. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Joe Verstig. Um, I'm the independent building and fire safety code consultant retained by the applicant. Um, I won't bore you. You have my October eighteenth, I think it's four pages, maybe five. Four um page memo that identifies my position and findings regarding building construction, fire protection, uh, compliance with the codes. Fire department vehicle access and personnel access, fire department staffing. Uh, in my professional opinion, you also have my resume. Um, nothing has changed. Um, this was dated October eighteenth. It was based a review of the original drawings. Um, the subsequent drawings. And I will reinforce that um, the changes that you had before you that were submitted today, I have reviewed and do not change my position in any way, uh, as stated in my October eighteenth memo. I've also looked at uh, Mr. Kingsbury's initial document and his memorandum dated uh, October twenty-fourth that was submitted. Um, I guess late this afternoon. With regards to that, there were some requests to verify certain things as far as uh egress routes and exit discharge routes. Simplistically, um, those routes, those conditions are all compliant with the code. And, and will be verified by your local building official and fire marshal. Some recommendations to sprinkler, the historic building in the front, not a requirement. The issue really comes down to, again, you've heard it before. Complete access around the building, access by ladders. Here's the approach. When the building code and fire codes were written. Years back under non-sprinkled buildings. You had four-story, five-story tenements, three-story buildings. It was critical to get a ladder up to the exterior of the building, get into that building. Break windows, do ventilation as firefighters climbed up the inside stairs, dragging hose and fighting the fire. We've realized that we don't do that anymore. We build buildings of a protected type of construction. This building is concrete, fire resistant at the base. And what we call protected wood frame. Which means that all of the structural elements and floors that hold this building up have a one-hour fire resistance rating. Now, we say one hour. That's during a test. It could last eighteen hours and we have seen retail stores with clothing that have been totally burned out. And if you remember in the sixties, some of you built buildings in the sixties and seventies, we used to, in electric heat, we used to put a layer of plastic, right? No plastic under the sheet rock. That plastic has never been crinkled. So we're talking about heat transfer and the ability to building to stand up. That stays there. The exit stairs are two-hour rated construction. They stay in place. They not only afford an opportunity for the residents to evacuate if they need to. Typically, it's a stay in place uh, concept because each apartment is surrounded with a one-hour barrier. The corridors are protected. And again, with the effectiveness of the sprinkler system, it is extinguished so quickly. So quickly. That by the time you actually see fire out of the top of a give you an example, take a metal trash can, light it on fire. By the time the fire gets two feet to three feet out of the top of that. It's extinguished with an automatic sprinkler system. So with that in mind, the code no longer requires rescue and escape windows. So those windows in many inner-city environments are bulletproof. We do many of our inner-city schools like that. So the concept of rescue and escape, they've been diminished. We don't do that. Therefore, there's no requirement to ladder the building. The code does require that you get a fire truck within fifty feet of an exterior door. We achieve that. In fact, we get to two exterior doors, one front, one back. The other requirement is that to be able to walk around the building. There's no specified width. You'll hear a width based on seventy-five degree angle for the ladder. So for a twenty-five-foot ladder, you're going to come out probably about five feet. There's no specified width. And the reason for that walk around. As supported by the International Code Council that writes that requirement. As supported by the National Fire Protection Association that writes a similar requirement. And it's supported by the state fire marshals in numerous applications in the past of this code requirement. But the only reason you walk around the building is to get kind of a feel for what's going on, a size of, is there anything back there as you walk around? And we've had numerous buildings where at the first floor, it was an enclosed garage and there was no openings on three sides. In those situations, the International Code Council, National Fire Protection Association, and the Connecticut State Fire Marshal say you don't need to walk around the building. The reason is, there's nothing for you to do. So no requirement for ladder. Yeah, we've given you a walk around. But it doesn't have to be very big for ladder access. That's not a perspective of the code. Firefighters go up the stairs, stand pipes are in place for them to connect with the hose. Shortened amount of hose they're carrying, fight the fire in that confined space that has already been extinguished by the sprinklers. Any questions?
I do, I do remember the, uh, one of the fire consultants talking about um staircases at both ends of the building and talking about the firefighters need to go up one set and uh, the other, the only other staircase being located at the other opposite end of the building. And wishing that that could be improved. Do you have uh, any comments on that, the location and number of the fire?
Well, they're perfectly located.
They're perfectly located at both ends.
Yeah, the concern is that the code always used to require that exit stairs are two ways out of a room. Be kind of adequately far apart from each other. So if you get one fire, it doesn't wipe them out. So here, if you look these two doors, we've had designers say, there's my two doors. But if you had a fire in front of that, it, it wipes both out. So we now say they have to be adequately far enough apart. Can't get much farther apart from this, they'd be in somebody else's property.
And two is a requirement.
Yeah. Yeah. The, the number is, once you go over five hundred people, you need a third. Or in very, very long buildings that are very narrow. You would exceed the distance of travel to reach those and maybe require a third. And the only place that we require a third for firefighting access is what they call um forget the term now, super tall buildings. If you're, oh, if you have a story that's more than four hundred and twenty feet above ground. So it's a super skyscrapers, which I think your zoning center prohibit. That's when you need a separate stair with a separate elevator in it just for firefighters to go up eighty, ninety stories.
We don't have anything that.
Nah, and you probably wouldn't, so.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
That's all we have tonight.
Okay, great. Thank you.
All right. Could I ask attorney Hollister a question?
Sure.
Just to be sure I understand clearly. The total number of units in this building are twenty, is that?
Twenty.
How many qualifying affordable units are there?
Six.
Six?
That's thirty percent.
Are they all one bedroom or various?
No, as we were just saying and shown on S D six, there's uh, one one, one bedroom.
No, two.
Two.
Two, one bedroom.
Bedrooms, three, two bedrooms and one three bed, six top.
So a three-bedroom unit and a one-bedroom unit. Each qualify as one affordable unit, is that?
Correct. Correct. In, in affordable housing programs, you try to make sure that you just have an affordable unit among each of the building types within the building and that they are geographically dispersed within the building. That we did that in our original plan and it's carried through in what you have today.
And on, on your, or the seven and eight, SB seven and eight, you have blue and pink. Like your print is too small, I can't read it. Is, is that to show where the affordable units are? Or what's? Chris, is that correct?
I mean, yes, it is.
That's, okay, so the pink are the affordable units?
Yes.
Thank you. Uh, well, one final question, if I may. Has the historical society opined at all on this application?
Funny you should ask that, Commissioner. I learned this morning that the Historic District Commission uh, had received your referral from August twenty-third. No one told the applicant, um, we didn't get a copy of the referral until I saw it on the website this morning. And they held a special meeting at four o'clock today. We said, uh, we were not going to be ready to participate in that and we did not. My understanding is they had a meeting. Oh, and we also pointed out that we had changed the building since the referral. But they went ahead and apparently had a meeting on the old plan. That's, that's what I know.
It's more than I know.
Uh, I have a couple of questions. Do you want to respond to that? I was going to ask.
Yes, that's, that was a TBD. But I'll, I'll also note that, yeah, there have been a lot of things coming in at the last minute.
Oh, yeah. No, that's true.
So.
And the, I, I'm sure Mr. Attorney Green has a bunch of things to submit. It's all, uh, no, no concern on our part. We've read everything and we responded to it in our comments. So we'll, we'll close the hearing tonight.
Mr. Nielsen.
Um, on the affordability points, I've, one of these questions I've asked before, one of these questions is new. Um, would your applicant be willing to do more than thirty percent of the units as affordable, given that they're such a big proponent of affordable housing in New Canaan?
No.
And would you be willing to de-restrict the affordable units for longer than forty years?
No.
Thank you.
Okay, um. Advisors to the commission, Lynn, do we have anyone presenting?
Good evening, commissioners. John Thompson, uh licensed professional engineer. I'm the town's peer reviewer for this application. You've heard a, a lot of testimony already this evening about what has changed from the last set of plans. From a, a traffic standpoint, the two biggest changes were the inclusion of the turnaround area in the front of the, the property. Um, and, and I only comment on the positive nature of that from a operational standpoint. Aesthetics and, and views are not part of what I considered. Uh, the applicant has also achieved a satisfactory ADA sidewalk configuration from the two buildings out to the public sidewalk, which was raised as part of the review last time. In terms of issues that are still outstanding, uh, you've heard Mr. Soli present his opinion on several of these issues, uh, without belaboring the issue. I, I have a different perspective on the several of the issues that I think the commission should at least be aware that affect the safety of this development. Should it be approved and constructed? Sightlines and sight distances, uh, for the most part, coming out of the driveway. Sight, acceptable sightlines are achieved in all directions other than coming out of the driveway and looking to the right on Main Street. For, if you were in the driveway and you were looking to the right currently, there's satisfactory sight distance. However, that sight line from the vehicle exiting the site crosses private property of which you have no control over. That private property owner could put in a fence, you could put in shrubbery, or he could put in other obstructions that might adversely affect the sight line. This is important because we're basing the recommendation by the applicant on the availability of satisfactory sightlines. Should that change, you would not have adequate sightlines looking to the right. I raised the comment in my, my latest letter, uh, dated the, I believe the twenty-third to the, the commission about the uh, traffic generation and land use from IT. I raised that only because it was brought up at the previous meetings. And I quite honestly, I would have appreciated and expected that the applicant would have at least acknowledged that the use of land use category two twenty-one was in jeopardy and wait, awaiting uh, action by the Institute of Transportation Engineers to correct the erroneous information that was contained in that. I do agree with Mr. Soli that even with the uh, change or the potential change, it's probably not going to have an impact in terms of traffic generation. I just, as I say, I would have expected recognition that there's some outstanding issue regarding the, the numbers that were presented by IT. Uh, we spent this, the, the applicant has spent a considerable amount of time talking about the option of traffic control. this, the, the applicant has spent a considerable amount of time talking about the option of traffic control on the site driveway. Uh, if you, if you take all of the issues that we talk about in the review of this application, I believe that that's the single most critical element that we need to deal with. Now, the volumes are low. I agree with that. However, a driver leaving this site currently cannot see a single traffic signal indication on Main Street, Heritage Hill, or Locust. It's left to speculation. We have the ability and it's been demonstrated by the analyses that we could put in a traffic control signal and not have any adverse impact on the operations of this intersections. Levels of service may go from B to C on individual approaches. But that in the context of operations is not a bad thing. What the signal does, it tells the driver leaving the site exactly what is going on. He will see a green indication, a yellow indication and a red indication. If there's traffic moving on any of the other approaches, he'll know that because he'll see a red indication. Should the adjacent property owner ever put in shrubbery, a fence, or other obstacles that reduces the sightline, now the driver doesn't have to worry about seeing 287 feet. He will see the indication in front of him and it'll tell him exactly what he needs to do and when he can do it. Now, talking about how does this happen? Connecticut Department of Transportation is in fact the owner of the intersection and controls this traffic signal operation. However, I believe that it's incumbent on the applicant, in this case, to be the advocate to do the right thing in terms of controlling traffic leaving the site. Don't leave it to speculation or to let somebody else make that decision. We have the ability to achieve a safe operation by the installation of a traffic signal that satisfies the manual on uniform traffic control devices, which says you shall not have an unsignalized intersection, an unsignalized approach entering the intersection. Where, if, if it was approved without a specific recommendation for a traffic signal, that's exactly what you're approving is the installation of an unsignalized approach into an intersection. That doesn't need to happen. The applicant should advocate for the right thing and they should make sure that it's clear that that's the recommendations coming out of the town in Canaan. Commissioner, you asked about the correspondence from DOT between the applicant. It, it is included in this traffic study. However, I read it and not surprisingly, there's no indication whatsoever that solely has raised the question of should it be signaledized, should it not be signaledized? And more so, what the Department of Transportation is going to say when that comes forward. No decisions have been made. I, I believe I told the commissioner, the commission last time that anybody you talk to is prepared to offer their opinion at any time. However, there is no formal action, no formal position by the Department of Transportation. I had the same conversations with DOT and they are very careful not to offer an opinion until they have an application before them. I believe that application should include the recommendation for signaling that approach. It's the safest way to do it. It'll avoid confusion on the driver and we'll provide continuous, uh, continuous future satisfactory operation. That's, that's the substance of my presentation and I'll be happy to answer any of your questions. Should you have any?
John, Chris, just to be sure I understand, sir, uh, you're suggesting that it would be safer to have a signal essentially at the end of the driveway as the, as people leave the site before they hit the street?
Absolutely.
When I say signal, I think, you know, three lights, red, yellow, green, I think, uh, a traffic signal.
You, you would signalize the driveway approach to this development exactly as you would with any other two, any other traffic signal approach to an intersection. It would have two displays, the red, yellow, green, and it would, it would be an actuated approach that would only come up much, much like all the other approaches to this intersection. It would only display green when there was traffic sitting there. It could be a very efficient operation, as Mr. Soli said. The, it, the car, the traffic, the amount of traffic is very, very light, so it would only come up on a infrequent basis.
But you're allowed to turn right on red?
You, you are. This intersection, again, because of complex geometry, it could be very easily restricted to no turn on red. Uh, I, I haven't evaluated that. I don't, I don't think Mr. Soli has either. That would be part of the evaluation, should a signal approach, should, should that approach be signalized?
So if I understand you correctly, you're saying that if we approve this application, we should condition that a signaledized intersection for the egress of this property be part of it?
That's, that's my recommendation.
But there's no obligation on the part of the Department of Transportation to honor that. I think it's up to them ultimately. The Department of Transportation will ultimately decide whether this.
You're right. And, and, and what I'm saying is that I believe that we don't want to leave that decision up to them. I, I, I believe the application, should it go forward, it should contain a recommendation for the signalization of that driveway approach. And, and then the state would make their evaluation and, and decision based on that.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, uh, Town and New Canaan staff. Uh, for the record, Andrew Kingsbury, peer reviewer for, uh, fireplace safety for the Town of New Canaan. Um, as requested, I went through the, uh, revised plans, the pertinent sections of the supplemental materials that were submitted last week. I think you've heard, uh, enough and I, I won't go into descriptions about the properties, um, how it's been separated, the units distribution. Uh, Mr. Rustique summarized very well the construction, that it's, uh, fire resistant for the garage and then a wood frame protected above for the rear building, new building. And then the front building will be, um, wood frame, um, but, uh, with this, it will not be sprinkled. So if you read my memo or it's in the record that the rear building was sprinkled, uh, stamped piped, but the front building will be not. So that would be a recommendation that the front building, uh, would have fire sprinklers in there. You've heard about the access quite a bit. So the driveway is, uh, basically the same width, but it's been extended and a 10 by 27 turnaround has been added to the front. I don't, um, foresee any issues with the, uh, gradient slope as, uh, approaches for the fire trucks. So I kind of described that as the front tow hooks of, on the, under the bumper hitting or the rear end dragging into the complex. I don't see that as an issue. Um, there are no truck turning figures that were provided, uh, with the, the submittals. But looking at it, I, I, I don't see that being a problem either. I think what it really comes down to is access for firefighting and I want to spend a minute talking about that. We've heard a lot about structural firefighting, about how effective, uh, sprinklers are. But, uh, in my 40 years of experience in the, in the fire service, the fire department has changed to more of a all hazards type department. We respond to a lot of things. And it's not just structural, it's not a, um, garbage can fire, you know, in a living room or a bedroom where a sprinkler will, will put that out. It, it's all kinds of calls. And, and the concern that I've, um, portrayed to this commission about the balconies, the closeness to the property lines, no access for, uh, aerial apparatus, um, ground ladders, not being able to be deployed because of, uh, fences and such. Um, and I'm more than happy to answer those questions again, but I do also want to be a little brief. Um, the concern is, what if we have a lightning strike in this building? And we, and we need to investigate that. We don't have access around the building to do that as it's, uh, presently proposed. Suppose we have a gas leak. Um, utility plan shows gas going into, um, proposed building. And I, and I am referring to the back, uh, rear building when I'm speaking. Uh, you heard about, there's going to be units up on the roof. How do we get to those units? Suppose we have a hazardous condition. I, I gave you my credentials, but I'll just repeat them. I am the chairman of the Fairfield County Hazmat Team. And I work for the Connecticut Fire Academy and one of the specialties that I teach is technical rescue. I teach in that program. Um, have a lot of background in that. What if we have a hazardous condition? What if, if there's something in the building that we can't evacuate the residents and they're on the balconies and we need to get to them to evacuate them? It's a normal, um, you know, we study a lot about what happens to residents in a, in a fire and how they exit buildings and it's normal for them, for residents to go to a balcony, not travel down a smoke filled hallway or a hallway that has a, of some sort of chemicals, God forbid, in it. Um, so access to those balconies is, is critical. Building's been pushed to the rear of the, uh, the lot to accommodate the longer driveways. And we've heard about how everything has been shuffled around a little bit. It's actually made the access for the aerial ladder in the rear, uh, in my previous report says we could probably access the backside of the building from this parking lot right out here. It's 1.1 feet away from the property line now. So generally you want to have buildings set back 15, 30 feet. And the reason for that with aerial ladders is because as you can imagine, you have a, a big long boom and their sections. And as aerial ladder goes to pivot, it's going to hit the building. It can't be 1.1 feet away from the roadway. It needs to be set back a little bit. And that's why, uh, very interesting, if you go into New York City and, and a lot of cities, they actually have 75 foot aerials and 95 foot aerials for different sections of town because they want that shorter boom section so that they can access the building. So I see that actually as, uh, you would think it would be beneficial, but it's actually a little more problematic having it that close um, to the roadway. You just simply can't get the aerial in place. Some other areas, you know, we've heard about, we've talked about the parking, uh, the parking lots, the stairwells. Um, I think the stairwells are okay the way they're situated. I do have concerns and in the beginning of my memo, um, and I should state for the record that the, uh, a lot of the Connecticut codes changed on October 1st. And the training's just rolling out on that. So the, uh, building code, fire safety code, they, uh, changed on October 1st. When I look at the top, uh, floor exiting, the, uh, second stairwell, it's kind of a, kind of a skewed as route that that resident would have to take to get to that second stairwell. So that will be vetted out in the process, I'm sure. Um, but I do have concerns that you have to travel down a hallway, onto a deck, uh, through a doorway, along a balcony, uh, alongside a a two bedroom apartment and then travel back inside to enclosed stairwell. So that just needs to be verified. That same stairwell exits just onto a, uh, five by five pad. Again, I'm sure that'll be vetted, but I, I need to bring that to, to, uh, everyone's attention that, uh, we can't just dump people onto a five by five foot pad. There needs to be a place for them to go to the public way from that stairwell. I also asked that, uh, measurements be taken for where that access roadway. It be within 50 feet of a doorway. Uh, you heard Mr. Rustique says it is. I measured it. I could be, uh, missing something. I could be off with the scale, but I measured it as over 65 feet. So just ask that that be, be verified because that's important. That's, we're talking, we're, we're moving equipment. We could be, uh, dragging hoes or whatnot through that, that accessway. Um, I'm sure there'll be some concerns between the existing, uh, wood frame building, the one that's there now and the closeness to it, to the, the new, uh, building. Things like, um, fires, what, what's the ratings going to be needed and what are the, uh, openings, um, in those walls? We do have a set of gas meters. So, um, I don't know exactly how it's going to be configured, but I can imagine it'll be 19 gas meters in that five foot opening between the two buildings. So just make sure those type of things are addressed. So just as summary of your recommendation, um, access to the site, it, it really is inadequate. Particularly with, um, the aerial access, not being able to reach the sides of it. Um, the frontage on Main Street is where the, the trucks are, are probably going to have to set up to operate. And as I had previously described, again, those balconies are not going to allow the aerial ladder to move up or down. Um, you've just, they're going to be able to hit a few spots on the building. I have concerns about the rear access being so close to the street and not having a setback. And then the ground ladders, the fact that, um, may not be able to put up ground ladders. So there's no access, uh, to this. You know, firefighters are very concerned if this is a wood truss construction that, um, firefighters don't operate on wood truss roofs. Okay. They operate on ladders, off of ladders, uh, off of ground ladders with roof ladders. They don't operate on wood truss roofs, uh, in fire conditions. It's just very dangerous. And I, uh, would just encourage the, uh, developer to think about putting generation in. Uh, it, when we have storms, when we lose power, we have people that are medically compromised, people that have mobility challenges. Five stories up, putting someone in a stair chair, bringing them down, uh, manually versus if we had a generator and we could either protect them in place, have them stay in place because, uh, their medical equipment will work. Uh, or bring them down in an elevator in an emergency. So I just encourage that, may not be required, but I would encourage that. So, um, I think that kind of wraps it up and I'm available for any questions you may have.
Missers? Thank you, Mr. Kingsbury.
Thank you.
Lynn?
Maria Koflet, Town Engineer. The engineering department reviewed the recently updated submission to P N Z for zoning regulation amendment. Zone change and site plan approval for multifamily residential development of 51 Main Street forwarded to our department on October 19th and 20th. As part of our assessment, we reviewed the drainage summary report and the site plan review set prepared by Deandrea Surveying Engineering PC, last revised October 13th. DPW Engineering had prepared our original memo for the proposed 20 unit residential building application submission on July 25th. The recent October 19th submission partially responded to comments in our original memo. And upon our review of the revised submission, our department prepared a subsequent memo dated and issued October 24th. Our memo is comprehensive with outstanding technical items that still need to be addressed to satisfy the requirements of our department. Including, we are still awaiting the results of the applicant's investigations of the existing sanitary sewer main CCTV work and flow monitoring. Among the number of items we identify in our memo, we note that the submission continues to have certain inconsistencies with our drainage policy. Has not satisfactorily addressed refuse operations, including timing and duration. And will need to demonstrate that the relocated building does not prove to be a visual obstacle to build vehicles in the adjacent driveways on the town hall property from which now there is only a one foot offset from the common property line. To clarify some of the drainage issues that were raised is currently the plan allows for the ponding of approximately six inches of water during a 10 year storm event and greater in the garage. The subsurface garage, and we don't find that acceptable. In addition, in the porous pavement driveway, the catch basins are allowed in a 25 year storm event and greater to overtop the sidewalk and then go into a right of way. That is our town sidewalk and we consider that also to be a dangerous situation, the potential of icing, et cetera. Um, in addition, some of the areas that we would like a further clarification on um, are regarding the care and construction of the trees along the western side of the property. The critical root zone does cover, um, excuse me, encroach into the 51 Main Street property. And we would recommend that root pruning and care prior to any construction beginning be done by a, a professional in order to preserve those existing trees on the western property edge that are not on 51 Main Street, but on a budding properties. Over 80% of the property right now as proposed is going to be impervious under the current design. We would like the applicant, applicant, excuse me, to clarify their calculations, um, to make sure that. We would like the applicant, applicant, excuse me, to clarify their calculations to make sure that the proposed parking that's exterior is also included. In those impervious area calculations. I have open to any questions that you might have regarding those issues.
With the. Stormwater surge that you just described in the parking garage. Is there a potential solution to that?
Yes, so the applicant does propose subsurface infiltration system. They could expand that. Right now, I do not believe that additional storage within the garage. Surface of the parking area is a prudent practice for a ten year storm event and greater. To have that ponding depth.
So I guess this is kind of back to the chairman's questions. So we have these unresolved stormwater issues. We have to close the hearing tonight, which basically. As far as I understand it, eliminates the ability to continue to. Work out solutions. So do you have a list of?
Well, my memo from the twenty-fourth is comprehensive.
Okay, so we would take conditions from there. That's it.
So satisfying those comments that the applicant can demonstrate compliance to those issues. I'm comfortable with that. I would just hesitate. Be hesitant to say before a building permit, I would say for a zoning permit.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, everybody. For those of you who don't know me, I'm Paul Payne, I'm the fire marshal. New Canaan for the last two years, fifteen years prior, I served as a building official here. There are a lot of things that are not on the plans. There's no doubt in my mind. They'll all be remedied at building permit time. But one thing I want to point out to everybody here tonight, both the applicant and the commission. Is Lynn, can you bring up a plot plan, please? But when there are buildings in close proximity like this, the code requires that the applicant. Design professional. Put an imaginary lot line. Between the two buildings, that lot line is the line where the fire. Separation distances are measured from that line stays in perpetuity for the life of both buildings. The issue is, and I apologize if this has been remedied in the last two days, I have not seen anything that came in in the last two days, but the problem I see is that. Regardless of where the lot line is, one building is going to be less than three feet away from that imaginary line. It's going to affect exiting for one of the buildings. And it'd be up to the applicant to. Fix that. And I just, what I don't want to happen is. The building has to be moved. I'm hoping it can be remedied. As is. So that's all I wanted to say.
Building's already getting moved.
I just want to make sure I understand what you said. So. You're saying because those two buildings, the two uncoupled buildings are too close to each other, there's a conflict in exiting. During.
Yes, fire separation distance. It may require. At least one building to not have any openings on that side of the building.
Got it.
Or separate the buildings more.
Correct. So I just wanted to point that out to both the commission and the applicant that that still remains an issue.
Thank you, sir.
Is there so, excuse me, is there some distance that is? That you would propose as to the separation of the two buildings? I would prefer not to answer that. I don't want to. It'd end up being the fire marshal sad to do this. I would rather. These plans come in, they're reviewed. And we can answer the question that way. So it is specified in the code. And I believe it's three feet from that imaginary lot line is your fire separation distance. But I think that includes overhangs also.
Three feet on either side of the separation.
Correct.
Okay.
So in other words, we need to be, in your view, sir, six feet between the old. Frame building and the proposed new building.
And including.
Or. Provisions have to be made to the buildings themselves.
Which would mean that no exits either. From. I guess the front part of the new building or the back part of the older building.
That's correct.
Essentially would.
Yeah.
Got it. Thank you, sir.
Okay. Good. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. I'm David Parker. I'm a preservation architect here in Connecticut. Fellow of the American Institute of Architects and I'm a trustee of the National Trust for Restored Preservation. I just saw the plans tonight, and so I've been quickly trying to jot down some notes. I shared impressions with you at your meeting back in August. I compared as quickly as I could, the new drawings with the, with the concerns that I raised at your last hearing. The fifty-one Main Street is a contributing historic structure. In the comparatively small New Canaan Historic District, one of only twenty-five contributing properties. The current proposal calls for moving. Fifty-one Main Street, which is the only stick style residents in. The New Canaan Historic District from its original location. Destroying its historic integrity and its original brick foundation. Relocating it completely and irrevocably alters its historic relationship to the street. And also violates the relationship that structures in New Canaan Historic District have to the Main Street. It, the proposal, I raised the concerns at the last meeting. That the proposal removed the rear wing of the building. And effectively bites into the main structure itself. The, although it has been stated that the building is not being altered, it is in fact being altered. The pitched roof on the rear wing is being eliminated completely and the walls that support it are gone. And the windows, the original windows that were in that rear wing have been. Are proposed to be eliminated or perhaps relocated, relocated from their original location. And I'll come back to this notion of relocation in just a minute. The, the current proposal also infills the western portion. Of the original open fretwork wraparound porch. And as has been mentioned, it places a huge transformer in the now miniscule residual front yard. Further altering and disfiguring the facade of the building. The, when I was here the last time, I made reference to the Secretary of the Interior Standards, which are the guidelines. That are used to consider properties, both for historic districts and also for the Connecticut Historical Register, which this building is listed upon. The, I won't go through all of those right now, but suffice it to say. That the, that the current proposal violates those standards in many significant ways. I would also like to call your attention to drawing S D four, proposed east elevation. Yeah, at the top. The fifty-one Main Street. Is the gateway or it blanks one side of the gateway to the New Canaan Historic District. If the current proposal is implemented. The elevation at the top is what you will see. That is what frames. The entrance to the historic district and it is in the historic district. It proposes a building that is effectively one, two, three, four, five stories high. In a district that I don't think has any buildings taller than three. The, and then. It, needless to say, I mean, the drawing sort of speaks for itself. That the historic structure is completely, not only has it been relocated, which is, which is a. Very, very, very significant. And I would note disqualifying. Aspect of it. But it also is, the building is completely dwarfed and overwhelmed. By the very, very, very large building proposed to be built within, I think someone said five feet behind it. I would also call your attention to drawing S D, or sheet S D five, proposed north elevation. Yes, the one in the lower left corner. This is the facade facing Main Street. Again, I think the drawing speaks for itself and the, this. Is not something that I've ever seen in a historic district within a historic district itself. In a historic district that has the, the character and character defining features and qualities. Of New Canaan's historic district and without going into detail about what it is that defines the historic district here. It is buildings that are of a certain scale and of a certain. With certain relationship to the street, which this will no longer have. The. And finally, I would note that if fifty-one Main Street is. Relocated and altered as proposed, it would no longer be a, would no, would no longer proposed be a qualifying. Building for historic district consideration nor the state historic district. So you would be effectively eliminating one of your only twenty-five buildings considered historic. The, that is how significant the proposed changes are.
Questions, Commissioner?
Attorney Officer. I want Mr. Park, it's Mr. Parker, correct? When you were preparing your remarks on this topic, did you consider New Canaan's need for affordable housing at all?
Of course. The, the thing is, the affordable housing is not instead of. Historic districts or environmental qualities that are an essential aspect of life. And the, and so. The, I'm not telling you how to design your building. What I am suggesting is that this disfigures irrevocably. A character defining aspect of New Canaan's quite small by comparison historic district.
Thank you.
Any questions, commissioners?
I had one question, if I may. Before I spoke about some of the changes at the front of the building that you have also noted in your comments. And that in addition to the. Front, the setback, being less setback, there's the transformer, but also the paving in front. Including the possibility of the centrally driveway being put in front of the porch. And the front door that that would. Sort of be a natural place for a car to park or a van. And that could also affect the view shed. When you. You comment on this, whether this is reasonable or I would you mention this?
It, like so many aspects of this proposal. Disfigures the, this property and changes its, its character defining. Its essential character defining qualities that make it a part of the historic district. The, it. The, having this building this close to the street is not. It is not characteristic of stick style architecture. And it is not a characteristic of buildings in your historic district. Having the front effectively become, I think someone said, the loading dock. Or a place where. Big vans or are parked is, it would be most unfortunate.
And just so I understood you correctly, sir, you mentioned twenty-five buildings that contribute to the historic district, this being one of them. And that if these, this construction goes as planned here on the. Two documents, the documents you've cited, that the building would no longer qualify, so it would be excluded.
It would, it would, it would no longer qualify for, for historic district designation. It doesn't mean the property. Is not in the historic district. The property is and always will be in the historic district. However, when historic districts are created, they, the structures are evaluated according to the Secretary of the Interior Standards. And evaluated as to whether or not they contribute to the historic district. The relocation of this building in particular, and the other things that are being done to it are quite severe. And it. It, as I've said, it completely alters the perception of this building.
And so what I'm hearing is that if this project goes ahead, there would be a irrevocable diminution.
Oh, it absolutely would be. The, what, another thing that the Secretary of the Interior Standards said. Posits is that alterations to buildings, historic buildings and historic fabric of buildings should be done in a way. That if, if those additions or changes are removed, that they would not irrevocably harm the historic building. The entire rear wing is being. Engulfed and the roof removed in this proposal. And the, one of the things about this building that I noted when I spoke to you before. Is that this building, it's. When I came out to look at the building, I was amazed at how much original fabric survives on this building. Rarely, rarely do I see buildings that have been, that have seen so little alteration from the time they were built. And this building, which is well documented in its relationship to the church here in the historic district. Is part of the, of the, the, the social. And architectural history of your community. And so this is not just altering something stylistically. It is also altering something that has come, that has survived to this point. And it's being suggested that it be changed drastically.
Thank you, sir.
If the historic building was not moved or touched, just left as it is today. Yet. The new building is built. You use the term dwarfed. If. That building is dwarfed, does that itself destroy or affect its historic nature?
It affects the nature of the district and it would be seen, I think, by most as compromising historic structure. Moving the building, moving it uh is is severely altering the building.
That I understand.
Yeah, um, and so and so the uh the the relationship of the of the of the larger building to this is is something that is within the purview of the Historic District Commission as a as a separate building. But the the historic structure itself, and I'm and I'm speaking as the advocate of the historic building uh is uh it would be an enormous loss to uh New Canaan architecturally, socially. And uh and it would, it's something that I really uh hope does not happen.
Thank you, sir.
So I just wanted to say that um at at the August twenty-third meeting, as was mentioned, um, this commission made a referral to the Historic District Commission. The referral was dated um uh September eighth. The H D C held a special meeting um this afternoon at four P M. Um, and they offered this following statement and motion. The New Canaan Historic District was created in nineteen sixty-three and currently consists of twenty-five properties, which represent less than one percent of the built environment in New Canaan. The purpose and value of the historic district is to preserve our cultural and historic resources. Fifty-one Main Street, otherwise identified as the Red Cross Building, is a key resource in the historic district, both because of its location as a gateway to the district and God's acre and for the quality and intactness of its architectural features and fabric. It is critically important to preserve all of the properties in the district intact. Based on our guidelines, the presentations by the applicant to the P and Z and testimony by several expert witnesses to the P to the Planning and Zoning Commission at the August twenty-third, twenty-twenty, twenty-twenty-two meeting is the determination of the H D C that the proposed changes to the building of fifty-one Main Street would not be within the H D C guidelines as it would significantly alter the structure's unique character and the fabric of the historic district in our town and should not be approved or allowed to go forward as currently proposed. And the H D C amended their resolution to say that they there was not the intent of the H D C to judge the architecture of the specific proposal, but rather the impact on the district as a whole.
Lynn, um, do we know what building they were evaluating or making these comments on? Was it? Is it the current one we see?
Yes.
Oh.
If this was specific to our referral to them.
To this.
Yeah. Yes.
So the so the question that we posed was um if there were significant, if there were significant changes to a contributing building to the historic district, would it alter the fabric of the district? And um, and that's basically their response, that it would alter the fabric of the district.
Okay, let's open it up to the public. Um, would anyone in this room from the public like to address this application? Let's check Zoom, please, Lynn.
Does anyone on Zoom wish to speak to this application? And if you do, could you just raise your, I believe we have a speaker?
Who do we have, Lynn? Is that Mr. Green? Attorney Green?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. May I proceed?
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Good evening, um, Mr. Chairman and members of the commission staff. My name is Joel Green. I practice law in Bridgeport with the Law Offices of Green and Gross, and it's uh my pleasure to appear before you again on this matter, uh representing Frederick Tufts, Julie Tufts, Sarah Smith, Candy Greig, Michael Collins, Jennifer Collins, Joseph Riker, Susan Stout, William Randon, Pamela Randon, David Squire, Susan Squire, Bill Frank and Lauren Frank, Jackie Powell and Jake Powell. Uh, my clients include a Butters and others uh who live within the Churchill Historic District and other concerned citizens of New Canaan. So I've reviewed the revisions to the application and the supporting documents, and I've heard the comments this evening. Um, and I'm at a bit of a loss uh because I would have expected that the applicant would have addressed many of the concerns that were raised by the commission, its consultants and my clients and our consultants, including most notably the impacts on the historic district. And it really hasn't. And we sort of, I mean, there's been a a number of comments tossed around, but basically what they've done is unhitched the locomotive from the train, but the locomotive and the train are still there, sitting there. Uh, and I was struck by Attorney Hollister's question to uh Mr. Parker this evening as to whether uh in assessing uh the impact on the historic district, whether Mr. Parker had considered uh the need for affordable housing in New Canaan and uh the question I would ask the applicant is whether the applicant ever considered the impacts of this project on the historic district. Because it's not evident that they did on their initial application or on the resubmission. The set aside development proposed by the applicant is entirely inconsistent with the historic character of the district. Uh, and again, and I will talk about the law briefly later in my presentation, and I will try to move this along because I know uh this is your second night uh in a row of having hearings, but um we do need to present some matters and make a record in this matter. But uh I will discuss later um the law and what other matters and uh the matters that the commission may consider in this uh eight dash thirty set aside development application. And uh we will show that there are health and safety concerns, but significantly other matters, including specifically the impact on the historic district that constitute other matters that the commission may consider and that those matters outweigh the need for affordable housing. And as I said in my initial presentation, there are a lot of places in New Canaan where six units of affordable housing can be built. But there are basically twenty-five historic properties here, and they can't be moved and they can't be replaced. So um I will present um our consultants, and I think what I'd like to do, I I'm going to change my order a little bit. And I'd like to um call on Mr. uh Monteleone to uh uh provide some comments, but um as I'm introducing him, there are just a couple of comments that I quickly want to make for the commission. The first one is, I am never comfortable with consultants quoting what Department of Transportation says or what the town engineer says. And until it's in writing or until it's before us or until I can see it in writing and we can respond to it, I I urge the commission to to uh just to really scrutinize those kind of comments and not accept them. Because I feel like, and I think Mr. Thompson touched on this, that first of all, comment discussions with personnel at D O T and what they may say is not binding or conclusive as to what D O T might do. And I know this is kind of obvious in elementary, but I just I need to get that out there. Uh, I heard um the comments on signalization, and I I think Mr. Thompson's comments are really well taken. Um, the sightline issue is one that I had raised. And uh I I believe I had questioned Mr. Monteleone on that at the last hearing. And if I could just briefly have a screen sharing, uh I just want to highlight uh one item.
You can you can share your screen.
Okay, thank you. I'm just gonna get the document that I'm looking for. So this is in the record, and this is the sightline um drawing that is was produced by uh the applicant. And once again, and I will ask Mr. Monteleone to touch on this as well, because obviously I'm I'm not a traffic consultant nor an engineer. But I have been at this long enough to know the following. First of all, this drawing is is just really unclear in establishing uh in establishing sightlines. There are D O T regulations that talk about the distance. Um, first of all, where the car, the theoretical car that is that is uh establishing this site distance has to be um ten or fifteen feet from the edge of the roadway or the traveled way. Um, there are different, there are some standards on that. There is some flexibility as to whether it's the um line of the right of way or the traveled way on certain roads. Obviously, this drawing uh sort of offers some conclusions. I know it says intersection site distance is measured from ten feet from the edge of pavement. That's a note three on this drawing, but it's really not shown as a dimension that uh we could verify. But significantly, even as just a land use lawyer, I can see that the sightline distance and Mr. Thompson had touched on this as well. You can see that this sightline that uh heads off the site to the right as the driver is looking to the right. And as uh Mr. Thompson pointed out, this sightline clearly crosses over a property over which this applicant has no control. Uh, Mr. Thompson referred to it as private property. I believe it is actually town property. But um I think that you can make inquiry of Mr. Thompson. I will make inquiry of Mr. Monteleone. But clearly, without control over what might happen with that property and what the town might choose to do with that property in terms of landscaping, in terms of fencing and the like, the applicant does not have control and cannot assure safe sightline distance using a sightline that crosses over private property. The D O T Highway Manual speaks to that. Uh, and uh the applicant hasn't addressed that, and that is something that I had raised and without a signalized intersection. And as Mr. Thompson had uh said, uh, this does create a traffic safety issue of significance for drivers leaving the site who do not have adequate adequate sightline view um once again to the right. Um, with that, I would like to um call on Mr. Monteleone at this point, and uh, Michael, are you there?
Okay, can you hear me?
We can hear you.
Okay.
There he is.
Yeah, got it. Okay, hi, I'm Mike Monteleone with Simcoe Engineering. And I've been doing um traffic analysis for thirty-five years. And um I'm based in um New York, just across the border from Connecticut in uh Holmes, New York.
Uh, Mr. Monteleone, can I just interrupt you for one moment?
Sure.
Uh, I just want to note for the commission that uh the, as the commission is aware, the revised drawings were received last Wednesday. I had forwarded them to um our consultants as soon as I received them. Uh, there was some issue with the size of the files and transferring them. Uh, Mr. Monteleone was actually away, having just returned uh from being away last evening. Um, he has had an opportunity to, in fact, um review the revised drawing. But unfortunately, um I had forwarded a letter to the commission that was earlier and before Mr. Monteleone had prepared a corrected letter. I can forward the corrected letter now, but I know that the public hearing is about to close. So I can either do that or I can just have Mr. Monteleone um sort of go through what was in the corrected letter. And I I leave that to the commission as to whether you want me to submit the corrected letter at this time, understanding that Mr. Hollister would not uh have a fair opportunity to review it before potentially we close the public hearing shortly. Um, and maybe it's more appropriate that I have Mr. Monteleone simply go through what his findings and conclusions were. I leave that to you, Mr. Chairman and the commission.
Well.
No objection.
Okay, no objection from uh Attorney Hollister.
So you could. Okay. Can I go?
Please.
Thank you. Okay, um, just to review um some observations that I've made. Um, so I reviewed two different documents. I reviewed the revised site plan by the applicant and the revised uh traffic report. Um, so based on what I'm seeing from the new site plan, a parking stall has been provided for trucks and vans visiting the site, which is an improvement from what was um in the original site plan. Um, and based on looking at the at the um turning radius uh diagrams, it appears that what the applicant is proposing is that vehicles coming into the site would drive past the drive, past the parking space and then back into the parking space and then pull out headfirst when leaving the site. So that being said, um, I have two issues with that. Number one is that when you have the backing maneuver on site, if a vehicle is trying to get into the site and sees a truck backing up, it may stop dead right in the middle of the intersection um because of fear of getting hit by a by a truck, especially a a garbage truck. Second issue I have is that if you have a front-loading garbage truck and it backs into the site, it can't pick up the garbage. So those those are two flaws that I see in in the revised uh plan. I know that when the um applicant's traffic consultant was talking, it sounded like it was fluid whether or not they would do uh backing in operation or front in and then back out operation. It didn't sound like it was defined one way or the other, but if you were to travel south on Main Street, there's no way a truck could make that turn and turn into this into the into the spot. It would it would, anyone traveling south in a truck or larger vehicle would need to turn in and do the back um entry into the into the space from what I'm seeing from the from the turning uh radius maps that were provided. Um, the access as was as was for pedestrians as was proposed by the applicant is acceptable now. Um, that has been uh improved upon. And then also critical emergency equipment coming into the site, there is more room for vehicles to get into the site. Um, if in if there was any type of an emergency happening. Um, but in terms of how close they could get to the the fire and and how operationally they could put out a fire, I'd leave that up to the fire, life and safety experts. Then as far as the traffic impact study is concerned, um, I am in a hundred percent agreement with Mr. Thompson. We have been in agreement on this since the beginning, since the first uh time we we spoke um to the public. Um, there there this intersection has many, many movements. It's the drivers coming out of the site cannot see the the signal heads. They cannot understand when there's a gap and when there's not. I know the applicant's traffic expert uh made mention that they could go when the during the yellow phase or the all red phase, but without seeing the signal heads, when would you know when that is? Um, so I'm a hundred percent with Mr. Thompson on the fact that this intersection should be signalized. It should be actuated, and there should be no turn on red. And the Connecticut D O T must be involved in in how this intersection is is implemented. Um, and um, and I agree with Mr. Thompson that it should be addressed to them that they are proposing a signal as opposed to being open-ended uh because um legally, it might be difficult for them to take a position on it. Um. Then as far as the trip generation is concerned, I know that the applicant responded to my question about it uh and said, well, we're using the latest version of Trip Generation Manual, which is the right thing to do and is the appropriate thing to do. However, what I'd like the commission to understand, even though they're using the right um manual, which is the eleventh edition, which just came out this year, that relies on data from many, many years accumulated over time to get those rates. So since the pandemic, as you know, there's been a tremendous increase in the number of deliveries by Amazon, by U P S, by Grubhub, by all of the different um people who now provide goods and services at the person's home as opposed to the person going out and 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 getting these things. So those types of changes in the way trucks come to these types of facilities has changed tremendously, but it will not be um reflected in the new in the new numbers. So just be aware that your questions that you So just be aware that your questions that you had were right on target. And it definitely does increase the number of vehicles that are going to come to the site during given day. The other thing I'd like to point out is that from a safety perspective, when this site was used as a parking lot for the town, there was very few vehicles coming in and out, just people coming in the morning, 14 vehicles coming in the morning, 14 vehicles leaving at night. That's when the traffic crash data was collected by DOT and was used appropriately by the applicant. However, with the new development, it's not just peak hour vehicles you look at when you look at crash analysis. You look at the entire day. And with the new development, there's going to be almost five times as many vehicles coming in and out of the site over a 24-hour period than what was during the time when the crash data was collected. So that's another thing to keep in mind, you know, when you're making your decision that, you know, you have more vehicles, you have more encounters in the intersection. There could be more crashes. Just by the numbers, that's how that works. And then the last thing I wanted to point out is the line of sight, which Attorney Green has pointed out, and so did Mr. Thompson, that the line of sight to the right crosses over property not in control of the applicant. And you can never guarantee that that sightline is going to be maintained over time and that this could be a serious issue if, as Mr. Thompson pointed out, they planted a tree or they plant shrubs or they built some kind of structure. And then your sightline becomes null and void, and that's going to create a potential hazard. So that's my takeaways from the revised materials provided by the applicant. And I would entertain any questions if anyone has any.
Can you, as you're aware, this is a 8-30G set aside development affordable. And this commission is tasked with balancing the need for affordable housing in New Canaan with issues, including specifically public health and safety. Can you comment on the safety of this design and term as it is presently configured, unsignalized? And whether it presents a safe or unsafe condition? And what the reasonable likelihood of harm is as it is presently configured, based on your education, training and experience?
So I'll speak to, I'll speak to the intersection first. So with the fact that you cannot see the signal heads, when you're coming out, you're basically playing Russian roulette because you don't know where the vehicle is going to be coming from. Because except for, as the applicant's consultant pointed out, the only time that vehicles come to a complete stop is really when it's all red. But there are vehicles that do go through the yellow signal and part of the all red phase. So you really have virtual seconds to get across if you know that that's when, when everything is stopped. And you won't be able to really understand that if you can't see the signal heads. So I think this is a very dangerous situation. To me, it doesn't really matter that whether there's, you know, four vehicles an hour, 10 vehicles an hour. Every vehicle that goes through there is going to have an issue with, with being able to see oncoming traffic and when there's gaps and when there isn't. And those vehicles are going to be moving, you know, at a decent clip. And, and I just don't think it's a safe situation for that signal not to be fully fully adaptable to all, all the approaches, including the new driveway.
So is it your opinion? So is it your opinion that there's a reasonable likelihood of harm?
I believe so. I believe that it's not a safe situation. I think Mr. Thompson alluded to that as well, that he doesn't feel that this application should move forward without, without the, the intersection being fully signalized. And I share the same, same view.
And 100%, it is your opinion that there's a likelihood of harm as a result of the present configuration?
Correct, correct. And then the other, the other issue that I brought up was the, the new, basically for lack of a better term, if somebody coined the loading dock. If vehicles need to back into that space and another vehicle is coming in at the same time and sees a big truck backing up, they don't know that it's backing into a space. They think maybe the thing is backing out into the street. They're going to stop or start or back themselves because of the fact that they see this truck coming at them. And that's, that could create a problem as well.
Could or will?
I mean, I mean, it's, it's, it's.
Is there a reasonable likelihood that that?
It's, 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 there is a reasonable likelihood that if there's an encounter like that, you don't know how the person who's driving the car is going to react.
I have nothing further, Mr. Monteleone. I don't know if the commission has questions for him.
I think we're all set. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Monteleone. Next, I'd like to move on to oh, just a, just a comment. There were some comments made this evening about remedying certain conditions regarding the design in the building at permit time. And in that, some of these issues that have been raised have not been sufficiently answered by the applicant. And it's troubling to me as a member of the public and representing members of the public that we are sort of denied an opportunity, well, we are denied an opportunity to see how these, how these issues, including the drainage issue and other issues that have been raised are resolved and to offer comment and potentially consultants on these issues. And it's, and sort of kicking the can down the road and leaving them for resolution at building permit time. I'm not sure it's appropriate. And if the applicant hasn't addressed them, then I really think that the commission should understand as the application is presently configured, what the impacts are of that incomplete work on the issues of public health and safety. Is it possible that the system is overwhelmed with anything beyond the 10-year storm? And so forth. And that should really be in the record. And I would urge the commission to pose those questions. For example, on the issue that I've raised with the town engineer. With that, we'll move on to historic concerns. And it was very interesting to me when Mr. Parker was speaking. And he showed slide nine from the PowerPoint presentation. How bizarrely inappropriate, and I'm sorry, I just don't know how else to term it, that drawing was showing two buildings, one is a historic structure and the other basically a five-story, 20-unit building on really on a historic site in a historic district. And it's just, once again, I have to comment again that it's surprising to me that the applicant didn't offer something this evening or in its revised plans that even sort of tried to address the historic impacts on the historic district. With that, I would like to call on Dr. Darren Raymond Locke to present her letter, which we had submitted to the commission today. And Darren, are you?
I'm here. I'm here. Hi, my name is Dr. Darren Raymond Locke. I'm a historic preservation consultant with over 20 years of international experience. And I am also the principal of Sawdust and Strata. I'll try to keep this short and sweet. David Scott Parker already addressed a lot of the preservation and/or alteration of the exterior elements of the building that had occurred to me. So I'm not going to go over them as I agree with what he said. But there are still issues with the proposed application in terms of the historic district and the ways in which the integrity of the building at 51 Main Street and the district as a whole are being affected. So in the historic preservation realm, there are really seven aspects of integrity when it comes to historic buildings, of which four of these seven are of particular importance to the situation. And that is setting, association, location and feeling. These four elements are determinants in the preservation of place and the construction and formalization of a historic district in general. So in terms of the 50-foot setback, that's something that is really shared by all the buildings in your very small 25-building local historic district. And in, in sharing that 50-foot setback, all the buildings appear equal to a degree. It doesn't place emphasis or importance on any one building relative to another. They're all uniform and uniformly setback from the street. This shows a compatible development over time and a lasting respect of these older buildings as new ones are coming in and being built. The alteration of that 50-foot step back to 19.7 feet destroys that harmony and really alters the setting, association, location, feeling, and just in general experience of 51 Main Street as a piece of that historic streetscape and within the district as a whole. The second issue is the design of the rear building. It simply destroys the experience of that historic house because it's massive. It dwarfs that historic structure. The historic building is subservient to this new building. And this is one of the main reasons local historic districts exist is to protect that streetscape and the historic feeling, association, location, setting of a building or a group of buildings. It's to ensure that any new development is compatible with what is already present, what is already extant. And making sure that the character-defining features that are treasured and respected by the community enough to emplace a local historic district in any given spot are maintained. So in my personal opinion, this, what's being proposed is not compatible with the district in and of itself, just because of the massing and because you're destroying those aspects of integrity that are so important. And that's, I'm open to questions.
So just, just to frame the question, if I may, for the commission. In, based upon your education, training and experience, does this project present? Will this project, is there a reasonable likelihood that the historic district and the character of the historic district will be harmed and damaged as a result of this project?
100%, 100%.
Okay, I have no further questions. I don't know if the commission has questions for Dr. Raymond Locke.
We're fine, Attorney Green.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, I'd like to call on Todd Bryant and of Heritage Resources. Mr. Bryant has also presented a presented a letter that's in the record of the commission. Mr. Bryant, are you present?
Got the camera, not the microphone. Okay, thank you. So yes, I am Todd Bryant. I'm a historic preservation consultant. I have a master's degree in historic preservation and I meet the National Park Service qualification standards for history, architectural history and historic preservation. I have an extensive CV, which I submitted the last time we were here. And I've written many national registered districts as well as individual nominations. So I'm very familiar with what goes into them and what makes them work and what, what doesn't make them work. And in this case, what we're talking about is what doesn't make them work. As I agree with everything that has, that Mr. Parker and Dr. Raymond Locke have said about this project, it effectively would destroy the historic district, this section of the historic district. It's a very small district. 25 buildings. I've written building, I've written districts with hundreds of buildings. This is 25. This is a gem that you need to protect. And this project would effectively destroy the integrity, not only of a single building, and I don't need to go into it because you've already heard all the details about the four elements of historic designations that it would immediately affect. But the size and bulk of this building and its incompatible design would just crush not only this building, but everything else around it in terms of historic integrity. And I don't believe that New Canaan can afford to lose one of its 25 buildings and a big chunk of its historic district for this project. I think that, as many have also said, there are other places in New Canaan where you can build affordable, six units of affordable housing. And how many market rate units? Was it 25, 26 market rate units? So, you know, it, it just doesn't work. To me, it's not worth the exchange for a small number of affordable, of units of affordable housing. I've worked on projects in historic districts with historically designated houses where new construction has been done behind the building. But it's in scale. It does not dominate the building or the streetscape. It's, you know, in fact, I'm thinking of one in Norwalk that's just been finished that I've worked with the developer on. And it's a very important building in, right across from the Historical Society, Mill Hill. But they put in 26 units of market rate housing that in a building that is not as high as the original historic structure, it doesn't dominate it at all. In fact, you can barely see it. That works. You can do that. You know, none of us are against new construction in historic districts. It just has to work. It has to work with the district. So this, and this clearly does not. And I'm reminded of a movie that probably none of you have seen called Bambi Meets Godzilla. But you could just apply that thought to some of the illustrations, some of the elevations that we've seen tonight. The size of this building looming over Bambi, this 51 Main Street. And just with that, I'm going to leave you with that image. So thank you very much.
And Mr. Bryant, can you comment as well on, based on your education, training and experience on the likelihood of harm resulting from this project on the historic property and on this historic building and on the historic district?
Absolutely. Moving the building to begin with and then building this monster structure behind it would definitely eliminate its, its historic integrity and that of the district.
And is your, is that a 100% probability of that outcome?
Absolutely. It's not a probability. It's a certainty.
Thank you. I don't know if the commission has any questions of Mr. Bryant.
We're fine. Thank you.
So when I appeared before you in August, I went through the inconsistency of this with the Plan of Conservation and Development, including sort of those themes of preservation of historic structures and protecting historic character towns and buildings. But what I wanted to touch on in closing tonight in this, I just want to discuss this briefly. I heard the commission's discussions on other matters involving other applications and the commission, certain commissioners that ask questions about sort of the kinds of matters that the commission could consider in evaluating and assessing this application and in voting on this application. And as I've said to you repeatedly, I urge you to consult with the town attorney, with Mr. Gelderman. And I know he has tremendous familiarity and will guide this commission. And once again, you know, lawyers offer their opinions on the law, but ultimately Mr. Gelderman is guiding this commission. But I do want to say this. The Connecticut Supreme Court has concluded that public health and safety includes the protection of the environment, which includes historic preservation. And obviously, that's front and center on this application. And the commission's power to protect the public welfare includes the authority to And the commission's power to protect the public welfare includes the authority to consider historical factors. I am struck by how little that the applicant offered on this application on their sort of. Uh, principal presentation and tonight on the consistency of this plan with the historic district. Uh, I mean, really nothing this evening and uh, the applicant didn't. Didn't really even try. The Connecticut general statutes uh, permits his owning commission to deny an affordable housing application. If the decision is necessary to protect and I and you've heard this a lot, substantial interest in health, safety. Or other matters which the commission may legally consider. And questions were posed by this commission on what quote other matters are. But the point is several courts have found that such quote other matters include the protection of environmental resources and open space. And in the case of, for example, United Progress versus Planning and Zoning Commission, which I discussed with Attorney Gelderman. Uh, the court held that historical considerations fall within the ambit of other matters contemplated by the statute. So uh, obviously, we have presented a great deal on the impact on the historic resources. On the impact on this historic property, on this historic building. And uh. Once again, the applicant has offered little. So as this commission, obviously that factors in is this commission. Is tasked with balancing uh. Whether the public interest of historic preservation outweighs the need for affordable housing in this instance. And given the demonstrated unique historical features. Uh, and the level of preservation of the structure that's proposed to be moved and dwarfed by. Dwarfed by this, you know, twenty unit building. Uh, I think. There can be no question that it outweighs the need for six units of affordable housing. Uh, where there are just twenty five such properties remaining. And uh, once again, uh. And I I can't help but emphasize that the applicant really didn't offer anything to balance that. Or to, you know, counterbalance that point. So we recognize the legitimate need for affordable housing in New Canaan. And we don't propose the use of the project for affordable housing, but this project is just so disrespectful. Of uh, the historic district and uh. We, once again, uh, once these historic resources are gone, they're gone forever. So we urge the commission to deny this application. I don't know if you have any questions for me at this juncture.
Oh, thank you, Attorney Green. Um, Lynn, do we?
Chairman, if I may, I just want to thank the commission for uh, your time and attention. And I I know you take this seriously and it's been a tough couple nights, but uh, my clients and I really appreciate uh, the work that you do. And your patience and attention on this matter.
Okay, thank you, sir. Lynn, do we have anybody else in Zoom land?
Does anyone else on Zoom want to speak on this application? If you do, could you raise your icon hand, please?
We good?
It looks like there is no one else.
Great. Okay, thank you, Lynn. Um, Commissioners, before um, I give Attorney Hollister the right to close, anything else? Okay, Attorney Hollister.
I I just have one comment. Uh, the what we gave you tonight is the response to what Fire Marshal Payne brought up. The the these are the changes. We we identified the same issue that's intended to deal with it. Uh, I uh. Your 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 weariness is uh, evident and I do not wish to prolong it, so I would just say thank you for listening. And I have no further question.
Okay, thank you, Attorney Hollister. Uh, this here, this uh, application's closed. Okay, Commissioners, um, I think we're going to make some decisions. Um, as I noted, uh, items eleven, twelve and thirteen, we are not discussing tonight, so. Give me a second, James. Two twenty Elm, do I have a motion for approval or denial?
Motion to approve.
Reasons for approval, Mr. Turner.
Um, the use is basically uh, very similar to um, the present use of the building. Um, the design of the interiors is quite striking. It's going to be a wonderful space. And I think it's going to be very functional for uh, the um, school and the um. Uh, children that occupy it.
Okay, great. Uh, do I have a second?
A second.
Uh, Mr. Scornia second said, any Commissioners, any other further discussion of motions?
I'm very concerned about the parking situation and the traffic flow. With the van drop offs and pickups, um, given that area, given the constraints of parking on that site that's always been there. And the volume of traffic on Elm directly across the street from Walter Stewart's. Right now, it's a wrong tense of purpose of the shit show. And this is just going to compound that. And I, it it would have been much better to have heard better answers from. The um, uh, superintendent as to how they were going to handle that. I'm personally not satisfied with the answers. I think they need a better, better traffic solution, parking solution, van solution. Than what they're currently proposing.
So you got two options. One is you're arguing to deny. Second option is we include a strong recommendation to. You know, per your expertise, your expertise and I I mean that. Um, that they need to address this.
Condition.
As a condition, yeah.
Yeah, I mean, you could have Roy Walder do it. He's our transportation director.
Okay.
Sorry, we could work with Roy Walder. He's a transportation director for the district. Maybe that can be a condition to come up with a traffic plan.
Yeah, you want to suggest a condition or? Uh, I would suggest a condition. Uh, I mean. The reason I'm so concerned is I heard, we all heard, very inconsistent answers as to what their busing strategy is. Is it one person? Is it multiple people? How many vans? Is it sixteen kids? Is it three kids? There is, there's a lot of gray answers, which is usually what we get from the Board of Ed on questions like that, so. Um, I'd like a lot more clarity on it and I'd like a definitive busing and parking and circulation strategy for that. Operation at that site.
Should we call, should we call it a plan? I guess to request a plan?
Yeah, okay.
The town is the landlord. And um, we can, we can police the parking with our parking department. Um, and we discussed that in meetings with the co-owner, owner of the second floor. There's, we've added a second. Uh, disable uh, disable spot, which will give the uh, Board of Ed the opportunity to have a van, always have a place. Uh, and we could, we could add another one if necessary to make sure there's a place for vans. We we control not only the top nineteen spaces, but an additional, you know, the the town controls the parking lot. And I assure the superintendent, we will do whatever it takes to make sure that he has adequate parking and they each of the. Uh, kind of minimum tenants have their parking, so I think we can address that. You know, I'd be perfectly happy to have you have have a condition that we do that, but uh. Again, that's been discussed with the co-owner and um, it's something we have the control over. I I I'm sorry I wasn't here to.
Yeah, I think, I think to second what Dan is saying is um. You know, Dan in particular asked the questions and there it, we we clearly got the sense it had not been well thought out yet.
Right. And it's not the parking that's the issue. It's the drop off. It's the circulation with the vans. You're going to have a morning period of approximately an hour where you're going to have over a dozen vans coming and going at the same time. And you're going to have the same.
You know, stacking up.
Same issue in the evening mainly because the only. Uh, ADA or level discharge access into the building is at the upper parking lot.
I'm not sure what numbers this superintendent gave you. My understanding, the launch program has like four to six kids. They're the eighteen to twenty two year olds. So some of them have uh, uh. Maybe disabled, but the reality is the limited number of kids. The alternative kids are all high school kids. Most of them drive, drive to and park. So uh, or get dropped off.
Well, so.
Yeah, we we brought that up. I think the he um. Stars Lutsey said that the um, the launch kids have to be dropped off upfront.
Yeah, but there aren't that many of them.
One per van, so.
One per van. Now you got four to six vans stacking up in that parking lot at the same time.
Yeah, I. I'd be happy to first firstly address it with, because we we monthly with the co-owners, make sure the plan as as he finds his tenants. And as the Board of Ed plans for their occupancy next year. I have no objection to a condition that we, that the town as the landlord work with the Board of Ed to make sure this project works, so.
But be very specific, work with the Board of Ed for the Board of Ed to produce. A a circulation plan for drop off and pickup of the vans for. Uh, mornings and afternoons to confirm that we're not going to end up with big bottlenecks on Elm Street.
Understood.
Okay, Kent, you move the motion. Are you comfortable with that?
Yes.
Okay, great. Okay, any further discussion of the motion? I call the question. John Goodwin, I vote yes. Ken Turner.
Yes.
Dick Ward.
Yes.
Dan Radman.
Yes.
John Chris.
Yes.
Sir, it's Scornia.
Yes.
Krista Nielsen.
Yes.
Arthur Cassavant.
Yes.
John Angle.
Yes.
Okay, super. Um, eighty Hawks Hill Road, do I have a motion for approval or denial?
Motion to approve.
Reasons for approval, Mr. Angle.
It's a. It's consistent accessory dwelling unit with our regulations and um. Uh, uh, use for his mother. It didn't seem to be, it's seven hundred feet, so it's within the right size. It didn't seem to impact the neighbors. It backs up to the Merritt Parkway. Um, it's appropriate for the neighborhood. For all these reasons, I would move to approve.
Okay, do I have a second?
Second.
Uh, this Mr. Chris.
Chris.
Mr. Chris. Okay, one thing I'll add is it is part of historically, uh, the commission's uh, housing strategy to support. Accessory dwelling units, particularly in regards to family, senior citizens, et cetera. So I call the question, John Goodwin, I vote yes, Ken Turner.
Yes.
And Dick Ward.
Yes.
Dan Radman.
Yes.
John Chris.
Yes.
Sir, it's Scornia.
Yes.
Krista Nielsen.
Yeah.
Arthur Cassavant.
Yes.
John Angle.
Yes.
Okay, eighty six Summer Street, do I have a motion for approval or denial?
Do we have to um, pick one?
Yes, yes. And make it part of the motion. In the uh, in the application, they say or.
So yes, we have to pick one. I motion to approve the disconnected version or the detached version.
Okay, reasons for approval, Mr. Radman.
The detached version provides more flexibility on site in terms of onsite parking, so that there's no stacking on Summer Street. Um, in addition to the garages, provides two additional spots per per tenant. Uh, while not really compromising any other site conditions because of it.
Okay, do I have a second?
Well, second.
I heard Mr. Ward.
And and I would comment that I agree with the detached version, the. Single version, it just creates a building that just looks too big.
Yeah.
For the area, so the detached, I think is preferable.
Yeah, Fire Marshal also was in favor of the two buildings from a safety perspective.
Yep.
Do we want to condition what Mr. Ritchie was talking about, um, maintenance of the slail being required by the deed?
Agreed, yeah.
Yes.
Carries with the title of the property.
Yeah. Um, which I'll note is, I think is supported by the town engineer, right?
Yes.
Okay, cool. Okay, uh, John Goodwin, I vote yes. Ken Turner.
Yes.
Dick Ward.
Yes.
Dan Radman, yes, John Chris.
Yes.
Sir, it's Scornia.
Yes.
Krista Nielsen.
Yes.
Arthur Cassavant.
Yes.
John Angle.
Yes.
Okay, um, given the late hour, given that we have some poor people who I assume are here to present to us. And we have a couple of other things too. I feel really bad. Um. Um, I I I'll suggest, um, we don't discuss Burtis tonight.
Agreed.
Okay, um, but let's think about that clearly. And then um, we'll not discuss fifty one Maine, but just as we're working on seven fifty one weed. Um, you know, please start thinking about your thoughts on the project where you come out, you know, and again. You know, we'll do a meeting, sort of talk about the sense of the commission, just like the process with seven fifty one. But you know, also start thinking about you, the evidence and the record, et cetera, et cetera.
So John, when do we have to vote on fifty one Maine? We close it tonight?
Sixty five days.
Okay.
Five days from today. Okay, that's great.
It could be in December. I didn't, I don't have a number. Should have had it.
Yeah, one of the things, I'm not there yet, so don't anybody panic. But I'm starting to get worried about the November meeting now because we have Hill Street. And we have the library and for the library, we'll have to take public input and, you know, I I have no idea how long that'll be.
I'll bring the turkey.
We'll need a.
I think special, I think special meeting in early December.
So what I'm kicking around is maybe we do a special meeting where we focus on deliberations. So specifically, the two eight thirty Gs, maybe we put Burtis in there. Uh, I mean, what do you guys, does that make sense?
Yes, yes.
Okay, so the planner and I'll, pardon me.
We just hashed it out on those, on those meetings. You just have to down on that meeting and then the public hearings aren't during our regular meetings. I mean, everything's open to the public, right?
Have you lost me?
You're. So for for just deliberations, we would just discuss. Uh.
Yeah, one of my, I mean, we we can take, yeah, my, one of my ideas, you know, it's so hard to move the public stuff around. So we would keep the public stuff for November fifteenth and then we do the special meeting to just focus on our deliberations on the closed. Application. So it makes sense.
Yes.
Okay, so Lynn and I will kick that around. We'll come back to you. Okay, agenda. Uh, item fifty, well, what 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 are you all here for?
Seventy Main Street, the last one.
Okay, let's get you guys up first. I guess I can subject to another five minutes of pain, but that'd be mean. Okay, so uh, item C seventy mains, I'm sorry. Okay. Okay, I I, um, it's been, it's harder being here all night in person, at least online, you can do things. Um, seventy Main Street upon application, Silpan Business Group LLC authorized age seventy main NC Partners LP owners recycling sections four two C seven. For retail jewelry or sales, sir.
Yes, yes, thank you. Uh, good evening, Chairman and Board members. Appreciate you having us. Um, Madam Lynn, do you mind popping up the um, PowerPoint, please? So my name is Alexis Silva. I'm one half of Silpan Business Group LLC. Other half right here is Joseph Pantano. I'm going to keep it quick and brief, see uh, essentially what we're going to be trying to put in there and stuff, but we're proposing for. Essentially retail business inside of a retail store that is vacant currently on seventy Main Street here in New Canaan. Uh, not the floor plan, the um, the PowerPoint, if you don't mind, Madam.
Is it? There it is.
There it is, right there. All right, so um, essentially it would be a piercing boutique, um, carrot luxury piercing boutique. A retail store specializing in fine jewelry. And once again, I'm Alexis Silva. This is Joseph Pantano. We represent Silpan Business Group LLC. We're business entrepreneurs with over thirty plus years combined of experience. Our mission is to provide a quality focused, modern retail piercing studio in the town of New Canaan. And really quick, I'm just going to read the narrative. That way we could uh, get up out of here. Just give me one second so I can pop it up. So carrot luxury body, uh, carrot luxury piercing boutique. Is a fine jewelry store that provides piercing services upon request. Carrot was born from a passion for precious metals, genuine stones and fashion. The need for a luxury and high quality jewelry store with additional piercing services in New Canaan is apparent. We are eager to bring that experience to the area. We pride ourselves in having the widest selection of high-end jewelry from the best American manufacturers that this industry has to offer. Whether you want to wear titanium, fourteen carat or eighteen carat solid gold, we have you covered. With our staff of jewelry consultants, stylists and piercing experts. We are more than happy to help transform your jewelry and choose the perfect adornment for your every step of the way. We are a heavily retail-based store, so make sure to keep the word retail in your mind throughout this, okay? Um, the vast majority of our revenues are retail sales that do not require a service. While we always prioritize the retail side of things, we still offer piercing services upon demand. The signage will be simplistic with a modern design and a sleek appearance. Upon entering, you will walk into a very sophisticated elegant jewelry store. Picture Tiffany and Company. There will be lovely, comfortable seating that is aesthetically pleasing and incredibly attractive to the window shopping eyes. Looking deeper, you will appreciate the sight of the majestic. Looking deeper, you will appreciate the sight of the majestic. Museum style jewelry cases with captivating lights and a gorgeous chandelier. Mirrors and reflective glass surfaces all around will give the space a classy artistic look. While keeping the focus on our lovely jewelry collection. We will have a counter at which one of our sales representatives will greet you, assist you and eventually bring you up once the purchase is complete. In the back, we will set aside space for an office room in storage capacity. In the far back, we will have one small procedure room if services are required. Our services range from earlobe to ear cartilage piercing. We highly value our clients. Peace of mind and knowing that their piercers are members of the Association of Professional Piercers, so our full time piercers are always members. Long story short, the association uh the Association of Professional Piercers is a nonprofit international. Health and safety organization, all members are required to submit environmental, educational, health and safety criteria. Carrot's top priority is always safety and cleanliness, without it, it makes no difference how fashionable the jewelry is. Our goal is to take every precaution possible to ensure that this is the case for our store. Beyond safety, we pursue creativity and elegance. Jewelry can be simple and delicate or bold and utilized to make a statement, either way. We strive to give the people of New Canaan and the surrounding areas what they want. In contrast, and to complete the modern look, the store will have fine decor that is inviting and pleasing to the eyes. New Canaan, New Canaan is a special place and we highly, and we are uh delighted to bring our. Unique approach to the art of jewelry and to our slice of Connecticut. Now, moving on to this, do you mind going to um slide two, please, madam? Not the best reader, so here we go, this is where I get good. Uh all the way up, all the way up, if you don't mind. In this part, I'll make nice aim with. So yeah, uh essentially, it's just a modern uh jewelry store, luxury, uh retail, 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 can't stress that enough. Uh the left right there is essentially what it looks like. Um, that's just kind of an idea. I know this might all be quite new to you. To the right is a photo of like some clients and stuff like that to essentially give you an idea of who essentially would be shopping there. And uh other things, uh next slide, please, madam. Jewelry, once again repetitive, but gotta go through it again, fourteen carat and eighteen carat solid gold that lasts a lifetime. Everything from lavish genuine stones to beloved Swarovski crystals. Each design has excellent craftsmanship, perfectly cut diamonds, precious metals of the highest quality. And it's safe, nickel free, lead free. And uh next slide, madam, please. Uh to the left here, some jewelry examples, that way you know exactly what we're talking about. I know we've all seen piercings before, but what is our jewelry looking like to the left? You'll see stunning fourteen carat solid uh yellow gold in genuine white diamond set. It's just worn in the ears, nice and simple, and to the right, it's fourteen carat rose gold set with genuine amethyst, essentially your purple. Uh next slide, please, madam. Here's just a photo of more jewelry, uh a bunch of mixed metals, uh this is all fourteen carat white yellow rose gold with uh genuine stones. Uh next slide, please. And then piercing, the big word, all right, go ahead. We do it sometimes, not a lot, eighty percent is retail based, twenty percent, we do offer that service. Whether if they get pierced or they need help with uh jewelry changes. We could do that, but we mostly focus on the retail and uh jewelry sales. And the next slide, please. Current projects, here's one of my lovely boutiques, that's me actually at one of my stores, that's the museum style jewelry cases. Lovely uh sign in the back and uh yeah, just straight, simple, lovely, next slide, please. And this is also my store, that's the seating on the left image over there, and then to the right, that's the uh. Yeah, the uh where you you're shopping for jewelry, that's the uh the showroom, essentially. Next slide, please. Inside of the cases, uh the left and far right image, you'll see white leather with um jewelry inside of them, that's how we display them. Uh to the walls, a a nice hand painted mural, we don't have any plans for painting any murals on the inside of that building, but we do take care of. Our our place and we we do take pride of um essentially being cohesive with uh neighboring buildings and stuff like that. Uh next slide, please. And this is the inside, that's what the procedure room looks like currently at um my business, been there for nine years in uh Newington, just outside of West Hartford, it's called Stay True. It's lovely, and then that's the signage out front, nice, simple website, ours. The name of the business, an open sign, just to let everybody know we're here or not. And then. That's it, you like brief, we have brief. And then um, do you want to go over the floor plan with them?
Yes.
All right, so we'll do a quick uh run through with the floor plan and then after, if you have any questions, feel free, okay? Thank you kindly.
Good evening all, Joseph Pantano Senior. The other half of Silpan Business Group LLC. So yeah, floor plan, pretty simple. Upon walking in, waiting area. Straight from there, reception, you know, so you could figure out if you're. Getting pierced, how long it's gonna take, what the prices will be, if you're just buying jewelry, whatever it may be. So you see this wall straight behind the reception area. Yep, that right there, so you, all you'll see if you look through the window or walk in. Jewelry cases, waiting room, reception area. Everything that has to be done is behind the walls, privacy for the clients. And this way, it's not an eyesore for someone that's, you know, a little weak stomached if it comes to the piercing. I think everyone here knows somebody that has piercings, whether it's ears or something else, but. Um yeah, so jewelry changing room is the first one on the left going down the hall, piercing room after that, break room, pretty simple, you know, straightforward. Processing room is what is where you get everything prepared for the jewelry change or the piercing. Um office storage unit, restroom in the rear. Pretty simple. But please feel free, if you have any questions.
Any questions for the applicant?
Yeah, I just curious, you've got fifty percent of your space dedicated to the uh display of the jewelry. And then the other, well, actually, it looks a little more than fifty percent is for the piercing and for other other things that are going on. Um but yet your business model suggests that uh what I believe it was seventy percent is.
Say eighty percent.
Eighty eighty percent. I I'm just curious about why so much space is dedicated to twenty percent of your sales.
Well, I'd say because the stuff we sell is literally two millimeters. Roughly, some a little smaller, some a little bigger, so a lot of that could fit into a small case. So if we have separate cases. Whether whether the, you know, one is all titanium, one is all gold, one is all stones, easy to separate because the items are so small. Yeah.
Makes sense, thanks.
Anybody else?
Okay.
Are there two doors, there looks like a front door onto the street.
Yes.
And and the second door. Onto a hallway?
Yes.
And is that for the public or is that just a fire exit?
That's for the public, but I think we'll probably be just using the front door, obviously leave that one accessible, you know, fire exit, whatever, but. Most likely the front, so they can walk into the jewelry area this way, you know, reception.
One, one thing I noticed on your store in West Hartford, it was a neon open sign and New Canaan does not allow neon signs, just to let you know.
Oh, that's simple, yes. There was a gift and he just, you know.
Yeah.
Okay.
But what's at seventy now?
It's vacant. Um, I I would assume, I I don't know the business on piercings, but do you need to get health department approval for piercings?
Yeah, we talked to the health department, they said they would put us under health and beauty.
Gotcha.
So the same thing as a hair salon, we spoke.
Perfect.
Yeah, very good. Okay, thank you all, appreciate it, sorry to make you wait all night.
Much appreciated.
Yep, okay, uh commissioners, do I have a motion for approval or denial of the site plan for seventy Main Street?
Move we approve.
Okay, do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, I'm gonna call the. Claire, I'm gonna call the question, John Goodwin, I vote yes, Ken Turner.
Yes.
Dick Ward.
Yes.
Dan Radman.
Yes.
John Chris.
Yes.
There's a Scornia.
Yes.
Krista Nielsen.
Yes.
Arthur Cassavant.
Yes.
John Angle.
Yes.
Okay, so let's go back to item A twenty two Pine Street.
Welcome to New Canaan.
Twenty two Pine Street. Pod application, Michelle Aguilar, permanent advisor LLC, authorized agent for ESP Pine Street for site plan of sections four four C five. She'll allow less than ten thousand square feet, medical office use for proposed tenant one medical in the business A zone at twenty two Pine Street. So I assume we're gonna get an update on our outstanding questions from last month.
Yes, good evening, commission, I have the Callison Design Team with me that will be discussing this project further. Brittany and Chelsea, feel free to proceed.
Hello, my name's Brittany, I am on the camera, I don't know if you guys can see me in the room. Um but I am representing Callison RTKL and we are, I believe we're joined by um representatives from One Medical as well. Um, we are here today to discuss the proposal at twenty two Pine Street. The property is located in the business zone A and we are a tenant improvement going in on the first floor. Following our last meeting, it was our understanding um that the commission was looking for the following items to be clarified. That included parking for our medical use at this location, demonstrating a reduction in a need from the previous use. Additionally, it was noted that logo identifications for signage was not permitted. Um. We were also asked to clarify our second story window treatments, fabric shades were suggested. Um in lieu of window film. And then clarification of mechanical units inducting. Um. And what was to remain and that screening may be required, so I'd like to take you through these points one by one. Um. I don't know if you guys can share our plans that we resubmitted? Are you guys, is anybody able to see that?
Um, do you want to share your screen or I can share the?
Yeah, I guess I could do that.
So the planner suggesting you share your screen?
Yes, and I have, I'll put that up really quick. Okay, I'm not quite sure which screen it went to. Can you see drawings up that say one medical at the top?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. And so we'll start with the parking, um we did. Do it, we did research the studies um that were provided to us. Um and after review of those previous parking studies, we've concluded that One Medical's use of the site is less intrusive. And less intensive than the previous uses. Um we reviewed the parking study from twenty twelve. Um. And it was noted during that study that a fee was paid to reduce the parking requirements for the building. Um by eight spaces, however, that use was also as an assembly gym, um which did demand more parking. We did add um a parking table noting the previous uses. Additionally, we reviewed the twenty eighteen approval for Merrill Lynch. Um, to replace the green grocer at two Pine Street. And then in the narrative, we did provide the links, but I'm pretty certain we got these from the planning department. Um. But if you do know on our sheets, per the town code requirements, one space is required for every a hundred and fifty square feet of occupiable ground level. Um and as we are only occupying the ground level, our calculations came out to about thirty. Required parking spaces on the site. The previous use um and previous tenant had documentation requiring forty spaces for the gym space. Um, and then we did go through and count the existing parking. Um and found that there were thirty one spaces on the street level, and that did not include the below grade parking that is also part of the site. Additionally, we did just want to note that Walgreens next door obtained an approval for boxcar parking rental. Spaces on their lot, um and we would like to note that there is also available parking at the train station as well as street level parking. Um located within a two to three block radius. So we're hoping that the commission that um this will be an acceptable approach. To our parking here. And then, would you like me to go through all of our points and then we can discuss at the end?
Yes.
Okay. I will zoom down. Um, the next item, it was noted that logo identifications for signage are not permitted. Um, we have revised our building elevations as well as the rendering. Um image to remove all of the signage on the building, and we would just like to note that One Medical. Will present a design and permitting package um by a separate vendor. Um but they have definitely taken into account that no identifying trademarks are allowed. Um, on the street level of the building. I think another point um that was brought up is that the second story windows, we had shown some window film. Um, we would just like to be able to do interior roller fabric shades. Um so throughout the elevations, we've just gone through and noted that. Um at each elevation. And then the final issue that came up in our last discussion um. Was in regards to the mechanical units on the rooftops, let me go. Here to the rooftop plan. Um. So the current building rooftop units are located at the upper level, and then there are a lot of units here. Um on this planned south side. Um. And so what we're proposing is really the only unit to remain will be this upper level unit, and I can actually go to a photo, maybe easier. So it would be this top level unit. Um, the rest of this, we are intending to demo. Um. With exception to a few smaller items, um but these main large duct runs and then this very large RTU unit. We are intending to completely demo and replace with new smaller units. And I have noted. The sizes on the drawings um in the plan sheet. And then we did also revise um our approach to the ducting, and we would like to do. Shorter um flatter wider you um ducting. And that would run down the main um center of the rooftop as to limit any um. Any sightline visibility issues. Then I'll just click through this. One more time.
They're gonna remove.
Um and so we did try to clarify that on our building sections, we also have really high parapets. Where the RTUs are, um and I don't think that was very clearly noted on our drawings the first time, so we just want to point that out. Um but if you have any questions, we definitely appreciate your time and um. Let us know, there's any other information you'd like to talk about.
Commissioners, any questions?
Good. Good.
Yep.
I have a question on the parking. Uh so based on your square footage on the ground floor, you determined that you needed thirty parking spots, is that right?
Yes.
And how many on grade parking spots on the site are there?
We counted thirty one parking spots that were on grade that did not include um anything under the neighboring building.
But the neighboring building is not part of your parking count?
Correct.
Right, so just on grade in that L shaped flag lot in the back, there's thirty one spots total?
Yes.
So you satisfy the parking count?
Yes.
Who who controls the lease in that parking area? Is that your lease or is that shared?
So our lease line actually ends at the building, um was typically how One Medical's contracts are written. Um but I believe it would technically be our landlord that controls the actual parking stalls.
But it's not for your exclusive use?
I don't know if anyone from One Medical is on the call. I would have to defer that question to them.
Hi, this this is Laura Harsh, I'm the design director, let me uh check the the letter of intent. And I will get back with you, I know there were some that were that were included, but let me find the exact language.
Lynn, Lynn, do we know if it's this, if it's still, probably isn't, but uh the same landlord for all three buildings?
Yeah, I think it is.
This site has always been partly challenged.
Yeah.
Yeah.
The previous, the previous use had, was more intensive and then they had more spaces that were approved, and then they had some. They had a, they paid a parking fee in lieu, so they were, so the site was essentially allotted forty parking spaces. And even though only thirty one exists on the site right now, and now they're needing to use thirty of them. But they, at the site actually has forty essentially.
Right, what was the prior use?
Um, it was a.
Gym.
Is it gym?
Oxygen.
Oh, it's oxygen, okay.
But I believe of the thirty one spots that are part of that rear lot, some of them are also used by the Pilates building that's on Park Street. That's some of their parking too. With two apartments above, with two two. With two apartments above, with two two apartments above.
That's right.
Yeah.
And and Merrill Lynch. I, if I remember correctly, I don't think any of that's uh exterior parking is part of Merrill Lynch. Merrill Lynch is all underground. But this all depends on who the landlord is for all three properties. At one time it was one landlord. I don't know if it still is.
Still is.
Is it?
Yeah, okay.
But but look, if it's a less intensive use, I mean, that can be our strategy.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, okay. Okay, great. Um, thank you. Um commissioners, do I have a motion for approval or denial of um? Twenty two Pine Street?
I motion to approve.
Okay, do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, Mr. Angle, I'm gonna call the question. John Goodwin, I vote yes. Ken Turner.
Yes.
Dick Ward.
Yes.
Dan Radman.
Yes.
John Chris.
Yes.
There to Scornia.
Yes.
Krista Nielsen.
Yes.
Arthur Cassavant.
Yes.
John Angle.
Yes.
Okay, twenty one Grove Street upon application, Jan Cohen LLC. What's that?
Thank you.
Authorization fifteen Grove Street for site plan approval section six, section six, one, two to install on an elevator. Who's here to uh address the commission?
Keep him online anymore, but um. I can bring it up.
Um, this is essentially um Wheaton Doria is adding an um. Ex- an exterior elevator that's gonna change the exterior facade in the village district. And so that's why they had to come before you. Um. And. It's a very small area.
This is Commissioner Cassavan. I I I I'm gonna raise an issue that I raised last month again. As we think about um historic district applications. Uh in light of all of our other matters, we should make sure that we give this. Serious consideration.
What I did, why is my video not working?
Wait a minute. Art, we're talking about. Um, uh twenty one Grove Street?
But but di- did Lynn just say that it's in the historic district?
No.
Okay. Thank you. I thought Lynn just said that.
And and Lynn, there's then we got vocal or or is that the background parts?
Hello. Hello.
Hello. Raise your digital hand. Is that Mr. Cohen?
Oh, hi, hi.
Okay, Mr. Cohen, you have the floor.
I'm sorry, uh. Thank you, Chair. Thank you, Chris. I'm sorry for such a late, late hour. Um. I am Jan Cohen. I'm the manager of uh LLC manager for Wheaton Doria. And also the LLC manager for fifteen Grove Street LLC. And I'm here to ask for the approval to install an elevator.
Mr. Cohen, Mr. Cohen, your your audio is bad.
It is.
Yeah, we can't understand you.
Is it better now or no?
Yes, that's better.
Okay, so I had to, I had my plants open on my desk to try that so I could, so I could, in case I need to reference them. Uh is that, is this better?
Yeah, just try not to move. Seriously.
Okay, um I'm here to ask for the permission to install an elevator and to make uh some, a few facade enhancements um for new contractor entrance. Which is right now being constructed under an existing uh building permit um for the store. And uh it's basically an elevator for the, this is a a completely existing structures in terms of the building itself. There's no changes other than adding the, it's a Lula type elevator, which is a handicap accessible, which will access. Um existing office space on the second floor and a small lobby that would have to be constructed to act to enter the elevator. Um and this, and for the entryway. The entryway is basically if any of you are familiar with Wheaton Doria, we we. We just flip flopped our contractor counter to one end of the store and our um. Outdoor living center to the other end of the store, but basically there was an interior refresh to the store of any of you have been in it lately. And um I'm just making a step, uh making a, I'm taking an existing, an existing egress and just making it a. And and entrance for the contractor area. And that's uh it's pretty basic. I'm not making any changes to any of the siding, parking or or anything. It's a, it's really strictly just to be able to put the elevator in.
Okay, questions for the applicant?
So this, sorry, this is Dan Radman. So this elevator will be going where you show the red. On that plan, which is the. Uh stair vestibule that goes up to the second floor?
We will, we will not be um de- demolishing the stairs, though it's basically gonna fit. Um and the reason I would be purchasing like a Lula type elevators because you'll enter. You'll enter straight in and you'll exit to the right. So there'll be if you're, if you, if you, if you've been into Wheaton Doria. It's kind of gonna go right into the corner right there where there's stairway is the second floor.
So you're building out an additional elevator vestibule?
Yeah, it's approximately eighty square feet.
Yep, got it.
Okay, anybody else? Okay, sorry, I think we're all set. Um commissioners, do I have a motion for approval or denial?
Motion to approve.
Okay, Mr. Radman motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, it was Mr. Chris, uh John Goodwin, I vote yes. Ken Turner.
Yes.
Dick Ward.
Yes.
Dan Radman.
Yes.
John Chris.
Yes.
Clear to Scornia.
Yes.
Krista Nielsen.
Yes.
Arthur Cassavant.
Yes.
John Angle.
Yes.
Okay, great. Okay, thank you. One last.
Thank you very much, everyone.
You're welcome. Take care. Do we have any issues with the August twenty third special, August twenty third regular, September nineteen special, number twenty seven regular meetings? Anybody okay with the minutes?
Minutes are fine.
Okay.
Too many, too many meetings.
Yeah. Okay, any argument for me? Okay, do I have a motion to approve all four minutes?
So moved.
Okay, second. Okay, John Goodwin, I vote yes. Ken Turner.
Yes.
Dick Ward.
Yes.
Dan Radman.
Yes.
John Chris.
Yes.
Scornia, Krista Nielsen.
Yes.
Arthur Cassavant.
Yes.
John Angle.
Yes.
Okay. Okay, sleeping bags are in the vestibule.
See y'all tomorrow. Same time, same place.
Where's the paper shredder?